We had a great time out here. And it's about bringing community together. We heard the band earlier from the high school. We've got food stands and ceramics and arts. We even had a marionette show earlier on the big stage. And it was all capped off with the council member lighting the Christmas tree from atop the ladder of the Los Angeles Fire Department truck. So it's been a great evening.
Well, what we do by creating an event like this is that we activate this public space. We close down the street. We bring in neighbors and friends and families together. And we create not only fun, but we create community. We create safety and we create memories. And I think that's just so important to create memories for parents and kids.
Green Meadows Recreation Center was the place to be for some festive fun. Their winter holiday event was a community collaboration, which brought together good food, community resources, a toy drive-in giveaway for children, and snow for all to enjoy.
Welcome to Green Meadows Recreation Center. Today, we have our annual toy drive-in toy giveaway.
This is an exciting winter festival day at Green Meadows Park. It's a chance for us to celebrate the holidays and to let our kids know that we care about them. So we've got not only presents, we've got some food, there's information, there's snow, and there's a lot of goodwill out here today.
Yeah.
Well, you know, it's really a collaborative effort. The council office, of course, works with our Department of Parks and Parks, you'll hear from them in a minute. But also, we have nonprofit organizations that are in the community and for-profit organizations that contribute during this time of year. We're really making sure that our kids have something for Christmas.
This type of event is extremely important to our Green Meadows community. We have those that are low income. And you know, during the holiday season, after you pay the bill, sometimes there's not enough funding to buy toys for the kids. So today is the day where their parents get a little relief and they're able to allow the kids to come pick a free toy. And it's free.
Today's event is really good and it shows unification and togetherness and getting the community out here and being a part of something special.
So today is a day for everyone, regardless of race, creed, color, disability. Today is a day for everyone. But this is also a time for us all to come together in unity and as one. One of the other things I would like to say, I would like to thank, the Electricians Union and the Carpenters Union. They have raffled off 15 PS5s. They have also raffled off four flat-screen TVs, 55-inch TVs, and four iPads.
Well, it's just, as I said, a really exciting collaborative effort. The leadership here at the park has the extraordinary job year in, year out, to make sure that our kids have the access to the resources they need to be successful. And so we just appreciate the effort.
Yeah.
Separating waste into blue, green, and black bins from L.A. sanitation covers a lot. But if your item is too toxic to trash, it can be taken to one of six safe centers around the city. They take the hazardous items such as paint, cleaning materials, electrical waste, and medicines.
Here today, we have the UCLA Safe Center, where residents can come by and drop off household hazardous waste, such as paint, cleaning products, medication, batteries, light bulbs, anything that's too toxic to trash. We want to make sure that it's not being thrown in the black bin, the blue bin, or the green bin. So we have facilities established where you can drive through and drop off the material for free and for proper disposal.
Well, this is very important because typically, people that are not aware of these programs tend to throw hazardous waste into their trash, where it can pollute the environment, it pollutes our landfills, it pollutes our groundwater. And it's just something that we need to teach our children to start doing the right thing and recycle. And this is one of the great programs that invites that. It invites conversation in the homes on how to properly dispose of hazardous waste.
Today, we're getting rid of some hazardous waste, mostly light bulbs, LEDs, CFLs, that have accumulated in one of our theaters. And we are able to get these out of the way and make space for other projects.
It's great that there are programs like this that are dedicated to disposing of this kind of waste safely, right? I love that there's a program, that there's people dedicated to that cause.
This is really a great program in that material that you shouldn't be throwing in the trash can can come to the Safe Centers here. It's a free service and the material is recycled accordingly, disposed of accordingly. And it truly is something that, as residents of the City of L.A., we should be utilizing.
Everyone's been helpful, from the guard to pulling up. It's just, it's not overly complicated. So thank you for making it so easy.
So UCLA serves our West L.A. neighborhoods, but we have six other facilities. For more information on our other facilities, residents are invited to visit our LACitySan.org/SafeCenters. And they can learn about the address and the operating hours.
In this week's feature story, Council President Paul Krikorian sits down with Ann Police to discuss his leadership during a difficult time. He talks about his work on redistricting and how government reform can create confidence in the democratic process.
Our guest is the president of the Los Angeles City Council. His leadership has helped the city navigate through some difficult situations. It is my pleasure to welcome Council President Paul Krikorian. How are you?
I am great. How are you doing, Ann? It's good to be with you.
Doing well, yeah. Glad to have you on. You chair an ad hoc committee on government reform. Independent redistricting, why is that so important for you?
You know, in order for people to have confidence in the democratic process, they need to feel that the system is not being gamed. And frankly, under the old model, it was, because the process we had was not independent.
What does redistricting do for folks who are looking to be re-elected? Does it complicate matters once the redistricting is done?
Well, in my view, it should be irrelevant, because we should redistrict according to the interests of communities, not the interests of elected officials. And so if this hurts somebody in their reelection campaign, that should be irrelevant to the process. We want to create fair districts that equitably include all of the communities of Los Angeles and allow their voice to be heard. And the election results, you know, those cards will fall, you know, however they fall. That's what independent redistricting really should be.
I mean, I'm hoping that you guys can all figure this read this with me now, because I just need to look back at it. I get what we have to do, right? This massage to create districts that benefit more.
When we listened to those tape recordings of that meeting, people were, of course, shocked by some of the racist things that were said during that conversation. But let's remember that the topic of the conversation was how to draw district lines in a way that would favor the members who were participating in that conversation, even to the point of disenfranchising entire communities within the City of Los Angeles. I am completely confident that we've produced a terrific policy recommendation for the council on independent redistricting. And I'm very proud that we're doing this for the first time in 100 years.
Is the 2024 election a reality?
Yes.
That's what you're shooting for?
Yes, for sure, redistricting will be on the November 2024 ballot. I guarantee that.
Now, you, Mayor Bass, and a delegation of council members spent some time in our nation's capital. The L.A. Department of Water and Power will receive $48 million in a federal grant to expand and strengthen the clean energy that we're all going for here.
The DWP is on track to achieve 100% clean energy by the year 2035. And what we're doing through L.A. 100 is really the model for the rest of the nation.
Thank you, Council President Krikorian. We were so glad to have you on today.
In this week's Things to Do, see the holiday movie classic, It's a Wonderful Life, vote for the Los Angeles Fire Department Photo of the Year, and enjoy a snow day at Jim Gilliam Park. All this up next on Things to Do.
Don't let the holiday season slip by without seeing the 1946 classic, It's a Wonderful Life, on the big screen. The story of George Bailey's quest to find the meaning of his life and a second-class angel's journey to earn his wings is one of the most beloved movies of the holiday season. Bring the entire family to San Pedro's Warner Grand Theater for this heartwarming Christmas classic. Arrive early and you can even meet Santa before the screening. It's a Wonderful Life begins at 6:30 p.m. Saturday, December 23rd. For movie tickets and more information, visit the San Pedro Film Festival website at spiffest.org. It's the most wonderful time of the year. Time for the annual photography contest by the Los Angeles Fire Department, LAFD. Photographers who have submitted their work to L.A.'s Fire Department throughout the year have each chosen their best shot for the contest. Now the public gets to vote on this year's winning snap. Online voting opens at 7 a.m. on December 18th and closes on December 27th at 10 p.m. Winners will be announced on January 2nd, 2024. You can like your favorite photo on the polling site. Check out lafd.org for the voting link. Los Angeles Department of Recreation and Parks, Streets L.A., the Department of Sanitation, and Council District 10 are bringing the snow to Los Angeles this holiday season. Gather family and friends to create amazing holiday memories as Jim Gilliam Park is transformed into a magical winter wonderland. Enjoy snow games, arts and crafts, snow sculpting, and tons of fun. This event is free and open to the entire community. Join the festivities on Saturday, December 23rd, at Jim Gilliam Park from noon to 5 p.m. For more information, log on to cd10.lacity.gov. And that's a look at some things to do.
And that's all for this week. I'm Natalia Bilbao. And from all of us here at L.A. this week, thank you so much for joining us. Remember that you can watch us online anytime at lacityview.org. And we're also on Instagram, Facebook, X, and YouTube. See you next time for more L.A. this week.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning and welcome to this meeting of your Los Angeles City Council. Today is
Good morning, everyone. Good morning and welcome to this meeting of your Los Angeles City Council. Today is Friday, December 15th, 2023. I'm Paul Krikorian, President of the Council, and we're ready to begin. Public comment will be taken today, both in person here in the John Farrow Council chambers and also by teleconference for today's meeting. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Blumenfield, De Leon, Harris, Dawson, Hernandez, Hutt, Krikorian, Lee, McCosker, Padilla, Park, Price, Ramon, Rodriguez, Soto Martinez, Yaroslavski, eleven members present in the court, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business, please.
Approve the minutes of December 13, 2023.
Thank you. Councilmember Ramon moves. Councilmember Lee seconds. Next?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Thank you. Councilmember Padilla moves. Councilmember Yaroslavski seconds. Next? Let's run through the agenda, please.
Yes, sir. Would council like all items to go forth with today?
With that objection, that'll be the order. Next?
Mr. President, there's a request to hold item one on the desk, and item one is an item notice for a public hearing. Items two through nineteen are items which public hearings have been held. The committee reports for items fourteen, fifteen, seventeen, and eighteen have been submitted and are online under their respective council files. Items twenty through twenty-nine are items which public hearings have not been held. Items thirty and thirty-one are closed-session items heard by the Budget, Finance, and Innovation Committee. On the continuation, item thirty-two is an item which public hearing has been held. The committee report for item thirty-two has been submitted and is online under the council file. And item thirty-three is a closed-session matter for which public hearing has not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration, sir.
All right. Thank you very much. On item one, there is an amending motion that the city attorney will read.
[inaudible]
Excuse me. There won't be any shouting out. Ms. Lewis, you've been here often enough and been warned often enough that you know there will be no shouting out in these council chambers. Anybody shouting? I'm instructing you to be quiet so we can continue with our business. I'm instructing you to be silent so we can continue with our business. If there's any shouting out by anyone for any reason that distracts this council from the work that it's doing, you will be removed from these council chambers. Okay. There is an amendment on item number one that I'd like the city attorney to read, please.
Yes, Mr. President. The motion reads that I move that item number one on today's council agenda be amended to instruct the city administrative officer in consultation with the chief legislative analyst to evaluate the different types of business permits issued by the police department and report on whether any of these permits should be issued by any other city department and if there would be any cost savings if another department issued those permits instead of the police department.
Okay. That's my motion. Do I have a second? Councilmember Hernandez, thank you. All right. And then I would also like to move to approve item twenty-seven on today's agenda. And is there a second for the approval of item number twenty-seven? Twenty-seven. Councilmember Hernandez, thank you. All right. Any other specials, members? Councilmember McCosker. Did you have specials?
Yes. Actually, on item thirty-nine, I just want to make, I realize that we are going to hear, the public is going to be speaking on that, but I want to make a clarification for the purposes of the public comment.
Would you like to do that now?
I would like to do that now. I think it would be helpful and instructive. In the motion that Councilmember Rodriguez and Park and I brought and Nithya Ramon seconded, we actually had these exemptions that were in the disjunctive. It had in the bullet points that said three thousand indoor square feet or outdoor area of one thousand square feet or otherwise exempted. In the language of the ordinance, and I'm not asking for a change, in the language of the ordinance, it does not contain the first or. It contains a second or. And I am told that the city attorney will interpret that to be disjunctive and not conjunctive. So any of those exceptions, if they apply, will apply for the totality of the exception. And I just want to make that clear. And also, for the purposes of legislative history, we are saying this now before public hearing.
Very good. Thank you very much. So thank you for that clarification and statement, Mr. McCosker. We will be taking that item up in the special meeting, which will be commencing at one o'clock, but we can have a doubly certain legislative record that way. So that'll be good. Okay. Councilmember Blumenfield, followed by Councilmember Ramon?
Okay. I'd like to call item three special for, sorry, there's a lot of noise in the back. Item three special for comment. I'd like to move items nine and ten, move the Budget, Finance, and Innovation Committee report. And just to be clear, in that, they're virtually the same. The only difference is that item ten was amended in the BFI to include the recommendation from motion nine, and then nine was noted and filed. So that's why I'm moving the Budget and Finance reports. And then on item thirty-two, also move the Budget and Finance Innovation Committee report for that item. Just to clarify, that item thirty-two, the budget recommendation concurs with the POG action. It just does one thing, which is to make clear that the million dollars in the UB cannot be spent without council action.
Very good. Thank you. I will second those.
Just for clarification, was item three called special, Mr. Blumenfield, for comment?
Yes, just for comment.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ramon?
I would like to call item sixteen for a separate vote, and I just had a couple of questions on item twenty-six.
Okay. Thank you. Stop shouting out. This is now about the third warning in this brief meeting so far. Ms. Lewis, you need to be silent, or you'll be removed. Councilmember Hernandez?
Thank you, Council President. I would like to call item fourteen and twenty-five special for a separate vote, please.
I'm sorry, fourteen and twenty-seven?
Yes, fourteen and twenty-five.
Twenty-five. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember De Leon?
Call number sixteen for comments and twenty-six for an amendment. City Attorney has the amendment.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney.
I'm sorry, Councilmember De Leon, the first one, was it sixteen, sir?
Sixteen?
Sixteen and twenty-six has amendment. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. City Attorney, the amendment on item twenty-six, please?
Yes, I do. The motion or the amendment reads, "I move that item number twenty-six on today's council agenda be amended to include the North Hollywood to Pasadena Bus Rapid Transit Project as an early involvement project, as identified in Exhibit Number Three of the MCA, and instruct the Bureau of Engineering and the Department of Transportation to work with the LACMTA to include the applicable mitigations identified in Council File Number Twenty-three dash zero nine zero six as part of the city's early involvement project negotiations with the LACMTA."
Thank you. I will second that. Oh, Councilmember Hernandez? Sorry, did you have any specials? No? Okay. Thank you. Any other specials, members? Any specials on my left? Any specials on my right? All right. Okay. Seeing no other specials, Madam Clerk, what is available now for us to vote on?
Mr. President, council may now vote on items two, four through fifteen, and seventeen through nineteen, sir.
Okay. Those items are now before us. One moment.
Sorry, Mr. President, I messed up. Okay. Ready? I think I'm ready. Okay. Once again, council may now vote on items two, four through thirteen, fifteen, and seventeen through nineteen, sir.
Very good. Those items are now before us. I see no members wishing to be heard. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes. All right. Madam Clerk, what is next before us?
Item three was called special for comments by Councilmember Blumenfield?
All right. We can take up item number three of Councilmember Blumenfield. If you're prepared on item number three, we can take that item up now.
Great. Thank you. This item is simply about looking at the issues of hate flyers, hate flyers that are directed at all sorts of folks because of their perceived identity or nationality. And this is asking the police to look at it and the city attorney and say, what do we currently, how do we currently address this? And how might we address it in the future? Just as, you know, if you have a rope and you drop it on the ground, that may be littering. But if you tie that rope in a noose and you put it on specifically on the doorstep of an African-American family, you're sending a message of intimidation. Similarly, with some of the hateful flyers that we've seen, they're specifically targeted to individuals or communities as a way to intimidate those people. And this measure, it doesn't change any laws, but it says, surely, if you send a hateful flyer with the intent to intimidate someone, that that is more than littering, that we must have some other tool in our arsenal to deal with that and to help prevent that kind of hate targeting. And I know it's complicated. First Amendment issues are always complicated, and we want to make sure that people can say whatever hateful things they want to say. And you can do that in the town square and, you know, online or in various places. But when you cross that threshold and you start sending that hate into someone else's sanctuary, into their front step, that is something different. That is no longer about your free speech. That is about intimidating someone else. And the idea behind this measure is to start the process of looking into that. It's complicated, so we've asked the attorneys to look at it. We've asked the Civil Rights Department to look at it. We've asked a lot of folks to look at it and give us back a report on where, how we deal with it now and if there are opportunities to enhance penalties for this kind of hateful action. So with that, I ask for your eye vote.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else wish to be heard on this? I see none. Let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes. Sir, sit down and be silent. Sit down. You're disrupting this vote. Okay. I've warned him. He's not complying with my instruction. Please remove him pursuant to Rule 12. Mr. Khan? Mr. Hamid Khan, you are disrupting this meeting and you are ordered, removed from this meeting pursuant to Rule 12. You are continuing to disrupt this meeting. Public comment was satisfied on this matter. That's the end of the discussion. You are removed from this meeting.
Because it's the end of it all.
Mr. Khan, please leave our meeting immediately so we can continue our work. Leave our meeting immediately and silently.
That's about freedom of expression. That's about free speech. That's about political freedom. And you can't be watching this, people, just not telling us your laws. You can't be watching, shouting at people, and you can't be watching, telling people to shut up, judge others' expressions of themselves. Just because they're a pocket of honor, just because they're a pocket of honor.
And just for the record, Mr. Khan is still shouting and refusing to leave, so we cannot continue with this meeting. He has been warned multiple times.
Everyone who's shouting out now, I'm instructing you to be silent immediately. Sergeants, they've all been warned. Anybody who continues to shout out should be removed from this meeting immediately.
From the members of the seat, out of sight, out of range. From the members of the seat, out of sight, out of range.
Sergeants, anyone that you identify as shouting out is ordered, removed from this meeting.
And, Mr. Candido, again, we need to...
No shouting out. I don't care what position you're taking on this, there will be no shouting out disrupting the meeting. All right. I think we were in the middle of a vote when Mr. Khan disrupted the meeting, so just for the sake of the record, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Twelve eyes?
Thank you. This gentleman should be removed pursuant to Rule 12. The gentleman who's yelling now, sergeants, please show him to the door. You are ordered, removed. Have a nice day.
Leave the meeting.
Leave the meeting. You are ordered, removed.
And for the record, the gentleman in the black and white scarf is refusing to leave the meeting. Everybody has been given a group warning to not disrupt this meeting. Actually, I'm sorry, multiple group warnings.
Sergeants, everyone who shouts out is ordered, removed. Everyone who shouts out is ordered, removed. Please start removing them from the meeting. We're not going to have this. Have a nice day.
And the woman in the black hoodie with the blue medical mask on has also been ordered to be removed. And just for the sake of the record, we have now delayed our meeting roughly five minutes.
Did we announce the results of that vote? The three people who are standing are ordered, removed from the meeting pursuant to Rule 12. Thank you. You're ordered, removed from this meeting.
And it would be the three women wearing the shirts that say "not in our name." I believe one of them was wearing a black facial mask and a black beanie. One of them was wearing glasses, and another one has a blue medical mask. Please leave the room quietly so that we can continue with this meeting.
So for the members of the public who are waiting for the meeting to continue and so that we can continue our work, and for those who are here as our guests for our presentations, I apologize for the delay. This may take a little bit, but we're not going to have disruptions of the meeting. Okay. Madam Clerk, what is next before us?
Council just took the vote on item three, and for the record, there were twelve eyes. And next would be item fourteen that was called special by Councilmember Hernandez.
Very good. So council members, item fourteen is now before us. Does anybody wish to be heard on this item fourteen? Okay, we're going to hold fourteen on the desk for the moment. Is there anything else before us that we can vote on?
Would council like to take up item sixteen?
No, not at this moment. Let's go back to item fourteen. Item fourteen is now before us. So on this item, members, we are going to open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Eleven eyes, two noes.
Very good. Let's go next to item sixteen. This is a second reading of an ordinance that was approved by the council last week. So on item sixteen, let's go ahead and open the roll.
Mr. President, item sixteen was called special by both Councilmember Ramon and Councilmember De Leon.
Thank you very much, Council President Krikorian, as well as colleagues. Let me emphasize on this item that's before us right now. Council District 14 has endured historically billboard blight without reaping any of the tangible benefits, the community benefits. This proposal has my support because it finally empowers us to negotiate terms that work to our advantage, like eleven... to our advantage, like eliminating dozens of more existing static billboards, especially in residential neighborhoods, and relocating new ones near freeways in commercial zones. CD 14 will have twelve poles, digital billboards. The vast majority of them will be in and around downtown Los Angeles on the freeways. But without question, by far most, the most of any district in the city of Los Angeles, primarily because Metro owns a lot of the land in and around downtown Los Angeles. The most crucial part for this for CD 14, and frankly, I have been, you know, frustrated that we're not considering it today. We bifurcated the component of the revenue that will be generated from the digital billboards is how we use the revenue generated specifically from the digital billboards. The generated revenue must, and let me emphasize, so it's on the record, must be reinvested proportionally, and let me underscore, highlight, italicize, and bold that word, proportionally, in the communities that host these billboards to address our communities' unique needs, providing money, for example, that can be used to fix streetlights, sidewalks, and trim trees. I'm looking forward to working with my colleagues to make sure that this happens when this body considers the funding piece of the TCN. With that, I thank you very much. I look forward to, not the debate or discussion, but for the vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. So again, this is second read of the ordinance that we approved last week. Let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes. Okay, Councilmember Yaroslavsky, did you wish to be recorded as a no on that? Councilmember Park.
Everybody who's standing up has been warned multiple times, along with the groups that were already removed from the meeting, who were also warned multiple times. So you were instructed to not disrupt this meeting.
So I'm, we're going to have to redo this vote because there's a little bit of, there's some requests by members that I can't understand because these people are standing in the aisle, shouting about something that's not on our agenda. So please leave the meeting. All of you are ordered removed pursuant to Rule 12, and you'll be subject to Rule Seven as well when and if you come back. Have a nice day. Stop disrupting our meeting and leave. Candido, Candido, I don't want to have to warn you as well. Please, just have a seat. There will be no disruption of the meeting. No, there's no points of information. You sit silently and let us proceed with our work. All right. On this item, again, let's go ahead and open, open the roll. If there's no objection, we're just going to revote because there were some members who, you know, didn't get to their button. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Nine ayes, four noes.
Mr. President, for the record, these ordinances needed ten ayes, so these ordinances fail.
Okay, we're going to hold that one on the desk then for reconsideration. All right. Madam Clerk, what can we go to next?
Mr. President, thirty and thirty-one are closed session items heard by the Budget, Finance, and Innovation Committee, sir.
All right. So I'm going to turn to the chair of the Budget, Finance, and Innovation Committee. Do you have recommendations, Mr. Blumentfeld, on items thirty and thirty-one?
Yes, thank you. These items have all been vetted in, in Budget and Finance Committee, and I think we can move them here in open session and recommend an eye vote.
All right. Very good. So if there's no members wishing to take those up in closed session, we can vote now. I'd like to ask the clerk to please read in the settlement recommendations of the city attorney.
Yes, sir. Item thirty in the case entitled Pablo Vera versus City of Los Angeles et al, there is a recommendation to reject the planer's offer of settlement. Item thirty-one in the case of Justice Chavez versus City of Los Angeles et al, there is a recommendation to expend up to eight million in settlement.
All right. Those items are now before us. Do any members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
All right. Madam Clerk, is there any other action item before us now before we go to our presentations?
No, sir.
Okay, very good. Then I would like to first, I'd like to first recognize Councilmember Park
Thank you, Council President.
For a very important presentation. Councilmember Park, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Council President. It is with great privilege that we are joined today by none other than Reverend Andy Bales from the Union Rescue Mission. Reverend Andy Bales spent over thirty-five years serving the homeless community in Los Angeles. Throughout his career, Reverend Bales has been a champion of sobriety and employment development solutions to homelessness, focusing on whole-person health, recovery, and stability. For the last twenty years, Reverend Bales has served as the CEO of Union Rescue Mission in Skid Row. The Union Rescue Mission has a long and distinguished history of service in the city of Los Angeles. Established in eighteen ninety-one, Union Rescue Mission provides meals, shelter, addiction recovery, and life-changing services to thousands of our city's most vulnerable residents. The Union Rescue Mission serves one million meals, provides two hundred and fifty thousand nights of shelter, and hosts fifteen thousand health and legal clinics every year. As CEO of Union Rescue Mission, Reverend Bales played a pivotal role in reshaping hospital and governmental policies related to the dumping of homeless patients from hospitals to the streets of Skid Row. His street-level perspective and steadfast commitment to the transitional recovery model has challenged policymakers to think more deeply about approaches to homeless housing. Reverend Bales, your leadership on this issue made you a hero to me personally, long before I ever had the privilege of knowing you in person. Reverend Bales helped raise an estimated over four hundred million dollars for the Union Rescue Mission, which directly benefited thousands of the most vulnerable Angelenos. Under his leadership, Union Rescue Mission opened the seventy-one-acre Hope Gardens Family Center in Silmar, which offers shelter to single women and children, and permanent housing for senior women, as well as Angela's House in South Los Angeles, a seventy-four thousand square foot facility offering interim and supportive programs for unsheltered children and their parents. I had the privilege of being there at the grand opening of Angela's House. I was so impressed by the design details, the libraries, reading rooms, play spaces, gardens, and places for families to heal and thrive. But those simple details are reflective of the tailored individualized care that Union Rescue Mission has always championed. Reverend Bales was appointed to the LSA Commission in twenty twenty-one, where he brought a fresh perspective about the needed approaches to homelessness. And with that, we have a short video that we'd like to share.
Things changed. A little bit of a political neighborhood battle caused me to be sitting in my front yard on paid leave of absence, contemplating my future, and the chairman of the Board of Union Rescue Mission came and offered me to be the president, incoming president and CEO of Union Rescue Mission on Skid Row, the largest rescue mission in the country. And I just looked out at my bushes in the front yard and said, God, you're too good to me. I failed once again to deliver, and you have rescued me. So that's when I came to Union Rescue Mission and said, I worked my whole life to end up on Skid Row, and I finally made it. This was like the epitome of my dreams, to be able to reach and make a difference on Skid Row. And at the time, I intended to cause Skid Row to disappear, to not leave one precious human being on the streets by regionalizing services throughout the county and decentralizing services on Skid Row. In fact, we, we had a chant get made up at our board retreat one day, "Skid Row must go, Skid Row must go, Skid Row must go." And that's been our rallying cry the whole time I've been here. I can tell you, we didn't make that happen. Skid Row is worse today than it has, has ever been. We've gone from two thousand people on the street to forty-seven hundred precious souls struggling and dying on our streets. We're ravaged right now by a mix of meth, mixed with fentanyl, and now meth and fentanyl mixed with horse tranquilizer, and we're losing people every day. But we did accomplish one thing. We created Hope Gardens Family Center for our families on, at Union Rescue Mission, to escape the mean streets of Skid Row. We also launched Angela's House in South LA. So we've begun that decentralization of services and regionalizing of services throughout LA County during my time here. Well, that brings us to an upcoming departure in December thirty-one. Last year in October, my wife told me that, Andy, after your next birthday, which is going to be my sixty-fifth on October twenty-sixth, I'm moving back to hang out with our redheaded grandkids in Des Moines, Iowa, and you can join me if you'd like. Well, I gulped and thought, oh, boy, I think she means it. And I tried to duck out of it and say, oh, yeah, two or three years. But a little while later, we were at our Life Builders event. She said, that was a beautiful event. Andy, you guys are changing lives. You're saving lives. It's powerful. It's impressive, but I'm not changing my mind. So I thought, well, I have to alert the board. So I alerted our Board of Directors to start the search for my successor. And this is not a retirement, it's a relocation, because I've already lined up a job in that same neighborhood where we dropped crime fifty-one percent in Des Moines, Iowa, working adjacent in a program adjacent to the most at-risk elementary school in Des Moines with an education and feeding program to help children and families in Iowa. So I'm not retiring. I'm just relocating. God has brought me on a tremendous journey. It's been the highlight of my life and career to be able to lead Union Rescue Mission on Skid Row and have so many people join in, in saving lives, changing lives, and making a difference on the streets of Los Angeles. The lives that have been changed are what lasts for eternity. And that's what we've done here at Union Rescue Mission. We have changed the course of many lives through God's power. God has done it through us, and there, there will be eternal reverberations of glory because of the work done through us, you and I, and we here at Union Rescue Mission. And I can't thank you enough. Hope you've enjoyed the brief journey that I've taken you on, but none of it would have been possible without your help. Thank you so much.
I'd also like to thank and acknowledge the entire team from Union Rescue Mission who are here with us today as we recognize Reverend Bales. In closing, we want to extend our
Just before you do, Councilmember Park, I do want to recognize other members for the opportunity to speak, and I'd like to call first on Councilmember De Leon.
Thank you very much, Council President. Ms. Park, thank you very much for presenting this recognition of one of our really incredible angels here in the city of Los Angeles. It's, it's unfortunate that we're going to lose you to the Midwest, to Des Moines, Iowa. It's usually the other way around, folks from Iowa coming out here. It's not reverse migration over there, but you, you've been given, you know, an ultimatum, either join or you stay here in Skid Row in perpetuity. So I, I think it is a good deal to be with grandkids, your loved ones, with your wife. But from the bottom of my heart, I just want to thank you, all of your incredible team. You're going to be showered with a lot of accolades. I think Ms. Park did such an amazing job, so I'm not going to really shower you with the well-deserved accolades. I just want to say a couple things that I think was so fantastic about you. Which one, there's a saying in Spanish, which is, no tienes pelos en la lengua, you know? And in today's vernacular, what, the literal translation means you don't have any hair, you know, on your tongue. That's the literal translation. But in today's vernacular, what it does mean is you speak truth to power. And what I mean by that specifically is not, what you've done is obvious, from your heart, from your soul, from your true religious beliefs, which is Christian-centered. That's the Union Rescue Mission. But when you speak truth to power, you've been talking to us on the council, whether it be the mayor, members of Congress, county board supervisors. And I learned a lot with our conversations. I learned a lot with you and Judge David Carter as well, the litigation with LA Alliance, and so many other things about the homeless industrial complex, you know, and all the many layers that, you know, perhaps agree about what we need to do for marginalized folks, but ultimately, at the end of the day, they're not really producing what they need. And you've challenged those conventions, and I respect that, because I do believe strongly there is a strong homeless industrial complex that's been rooted deeply in this city for years, if not decades. Why do we have so many people of color, primarily African-Americans, and growing exponentially now Latinos living on the streets in Skid Row in particular? For years, if not decades. This is not a recent phenomenon. And you have spoken, you have spoken truth to power, challenging the conventions, not caring if you're a Democrat or a progressive Democrat, or Republican, or a moderate, you know, and I appreciate that. I appreciate that you challenge the, the very folks that you work with within the structure of the safety net that is Skid Row, your own peers and colleagues, where there may be agreement or much disagreement in terms of what the outcomes are. That I've always appreciated very much so, not just part of the status quo, we give money to this rescue mission, we give money to this organization, and they do God's work, but the outcomes are really not there. And I appreciate that deeply about you, very much so, how you light the fire under us as well. That is what is needed, because we get complacent, and I mean not just us, but just politicians as a whole. Get complacent with the status quo. We think we're doing a good job. We show up in November during Thanksgiving. We, we give out, you know, Thanksgiving dinners. You know, a lot of folks from Hollywood are doing it for themselves. They're not really doing it for the homeless folks. And that's what I appreciate about you. You're going to be missed greatly. I want to give a shout out to your team, Union Rescue Mission, who have been wonderful as well, too. You have been incredible, too, because you are that rock that gives the backup to, you know, our very own Reverend. Thank you very much, Tracy Park, and may God bless you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, counsel. And if I could just add to that, Reverend Bales, it's not just speaking truth to power. You speak just plain truth, based on the life experience that you've had of service to this community, to this population. And often, that truth has varied somewhat from the orthodoxy that we so often hear about how to address the challenge of homelessness. And so, and no one has more credibility than you in addressing that exact issue. So we're grateful to you, not only for all your years of service, not only for the lives that you've changed, for the lives you've certainly saved, but also for helping to lead us in a dialogue and a discussion about the issue, the greatest issue of the day, in a way that helps to, to direct us towards better solutions. So we thank you very much, and we wish you all the best in the next phase of your journey. Councilmember Park.
Thank you, Council President. So with that, on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, I'd like to thank you for your incredible thirty-five years of service to our community. Thank you so much. We wish Reverend Bales all of the best in his future endeavors, and I'd like to offer him the opportunity to say a few words.
Wow. This has been a sad week for me, but it's also been, because I don't want to go, I got to tell you. I, but it's also been a But it's also been a piece of heaven, a little bit of heaven, because the kids have been thanking me and giving me crafts and hugs, and my staff has been too good to me. My board honored me Sunday night, and now you all. I'm overwhelmed with the goodness shown toward me, and I can't thank you enough to all of you for the opportunity to serve LA. My heart's always been in LA because my dad grew up as a homeless child from four to 17, and many of those years were in LA, wandering around with his dad, and came out to college here and went back and then felt drawn back to come and try to assist with the poverty and homelessness that's in LA. And so my heart will always be here, and I'll always be praying for you and those who are suffering on the streets. And I couldn't have been honored by a greater warrior for recovery and comebacks and helping people become productive again and getting connected to community again and having hope again to be independent and have a sustainable life. And just one more time, truth to power. If we are ever going to solve this problem, we are going to have to not depend on billions of dollars for unsustainable, very expensive, slow-to-develop, dirty, crime-ridden, drug-filled housing where people merely survive, possibly die of addiction rather than making a comeback. We have to have case management, recovery, mental health services, and make it possible for those who want to bounce back. We don't have enough money in the world to sustain with billions of dollars of tax money everybody struggling with homelessness. Comeback stories are possible. Union Rescue Mission's proof, my team can tell you, 25% of our team at Union Rescue Mission, over 200 staff, are former guests who turned their lives around and are making a comeback. So we believe strongly in comebacks and miracles happen, and thanks for making miracles happen.
Reverend Bales, you are truly an angel, and the City of Angels, thank you for all that you've done for the City of Los Angeles. Thank you, Council President.
All right. Thank you very much, Reverend Bales and everyone from Union Rescue. Thank you so much for all your service, and congratulations. All right. Next, we're going to go to Councilmember Padilla, who has our next presentation. Councilmember Padilla, you have the floor.
All righty. Come on over. Come on over here. Do you have one over here? All right, we're good? Okay.
Councilmember Padilla, good morning.
Good morning, everyone. As we wrap around the year, I'm happy to extend a special recognition today to actress, activist, founder, and president of the Michael Daughters Foundation, Sierra Payton, who is here today accompanied by friends, family, and colleagues. Some of you may recognize her from her role on the hit Tyler Perry show, "The Oval." As an accomplished actress, writer, and educator, Sierra understands the transformative and healing power of storytelling. And for the last decade, she has been on a mission to provide free and low-cost enrichment programs to youth and families in underserved communities through her nonprofit, the Michael Daughters Foundation. Since its founding, the Michael Daughters Foundation has been serving youth, and in particular, young girls dealing with the effects of mass incarceration. Through this organization, our local youth get to enjoy the arts-based programs such as filmmaking and creative writing workshops. In addition, the organization offers financial literacy workshops, emergency funds, and scholarship money for college students impacted by incarceration and/or having a loved one behind bars. I first met Sierra when I was a field deputy for Panorama City, and the Department of Cultural Affairs had funding for CD6, and I helped direct her towards Casa Esperanza. And weeks later, at the end of the summer, over 20 kids were there telling their story at a local park, telling their truths, and I specifically remember the way they added context to what everyone that summer was talking about, this recent guy who was now living under the bridge. And it was through these youths that we learned his story about the domestic violence he was experiencing, the alcoholism, and so much more related to how this new teenager was now living and trying to survive with the help of the entire block. She helped turn these kids into what I referred to as little mini Sandra Sisneros, telling their stories in the form of small vignettes that turned into theater. Great experience. Since then, I have admired Sierra's passion for bringing arts education to young girls. So we went from working together in the summer to staying in touch through social media. It's been great. So for those who have gone through these devastating experiences of growing up with an incarcerated family member or loved one, something we have in common, it's a passion that comes out of her own journey with growing up with a father who is incarcerated, of which her acclaimed play, "Michael's Daughter," is based on, where she tells the story of how having her father away has impacted her life. I'm so grateful for Sierra's commitment to our underserved youth and families. But before I bring her to speak to all of you, I would like to invite two special guests that have joined her to say a few words. First, I'd like to introduce Kevin Diaz Chavez, who is a teaching artist at the Michael Daughters Foundation. Kevin?
Good morning, everyone. I stand before you today as a teaching artist for the Michael's Daughter Foundation, and I owe a debt of gratitude to an incredible leader, Ms. Sierra Payton. When Sierra entrusted me with the role of a teaching artist, I felt a mix of excitement and nervousness. However, her belief in my abilities fueled my determination to make a meaningful impact on students' lives. Under Sierra's leadership, the team became a family united by a shared passion for education and the arts. She didn't just build a program, she crafted an environment where creativity thrived and students flourished. Sierra's vision extended beyond the ordinary. She instilled in us the belief that education is not just about imparting knowledge, but about inspiring minds and nurturing talent. Through her guidance, we developed a program that not only educates, but also empowers. I'm grateful for the chance she took on me, for the team she built, and for the program that continues to make a difference in the lives of our student. Sierra Payton, through the Michael's Daughter Foundation, shines brightly as a mentor, a visionary, and a catalyst for positive change. Thank you.
And now I would like to invite Aldi Hernandez, a former student, to share a few words.
Hi, good morning. Within the Michael's Daughter Foundation, Mrs. Sierra curated an environment that was not only welcoming and enjoyable, but also imbued with a sense of safety, allowing us to freely express ourselves through acting and filmmaking. This experience significantly contributed to the refinement of my social skills, deepened my artistic passion, and served as a distraction to everything going on in my personal life. Beyond being a student in the program, Mrs. Sierra has graciously given me numerous opportunities to contribute to the program when possible. However, her most invaluable actions to me was giving me the safe place to go to and offering me the most needed advice, and which has been a great influence in my career aspirations. Undoubtedly, Mrs. Sierra is deserving of every ounce of success and happiness she has earnestly earned. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin and Aldi, and for reiterating exactly why Sierra deserves this recognition today. So without any further conversation, it is my pleasure to invite Sierra to share a few words, and congratulations on behalf of the entire city of Los Angeles.
Call upon the healing spirit and mother spirit. Well, hello, everyone. This is an incredible honor, and I want to express my deepest gratitude to City Councilwoman Padilla, and also to the members of LA City Council for taking the time to recognize the work of the Michael's Daughter Foundation. Your dedication to helping to make our city a better place is truly commendable, so thank you. I stand here before you all today as a proud girl from the Third Ward of New Orleans, a vibrant city that is not without its flaws and challenges. Growing up there, I faced numerous adversities, most notably witnessing the struggles of adults in my household battling various substance addictions, which ultimately led to my father's incarceration. But despite these challenges, the guidance of dedicated teachers fueled my desire to contribute in whatever small way that I can to help to bring some light and some joy into someone else's life, especially those who come from similar backgrounds as myself. The Michael's Daughter Foundation was born out of this desire. It is a gestation of hope. I firmly believe that by building thriving communities begins with the narratives that define us. So through storytelling, our foundation aims to reclaim these narratives, reshaping how the world perceives us. We hold the conviction that one person has the power to alter a family dynamic, and in return, families can transform entire communities. So again, I want to give another heartfelt thanks to City Councilwoman Padilla, the LA City Council, the Michael's Daughter Foundation team, and our partners from Casa Esperanza, Maria Non dress Carden Skate Park, and Girls Athletic Leadership School for their warm embrace over the last decade. My aspirations is to continue providing safe spaces for youth and families so that they can creatively express themselves. I dream of expanding our programs throughout Panorama City to every LA City Council district, then statewide, nationwide, and with the grace of God, worldwide. As we embark on this journey, let us all unite in our shared goal to inspire and be inspired. Together, we can create a ripple effect of positive change that extends from our immediate backgrounds and surroundings to across the world. So thank you all again for your time and your support. May God bless. Aspire to inspire.
And now on behalf of the entire city council, I'd like to present you with this resolution, congratulating you for everything you do.
Oh, my gosh, thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, and congratulations on such extraordinary service to our community. Councilmember Padilla, thank you for bringing the presentation. All right, members without objection, we're now going to take up item 16 on reconsideration again, and so we're going to go ahead on that item and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
11 ayes, 3 noes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Thank you very much.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Hernandez? Oh, Councilmember Hernandez, you wish to be recorded as a no on that item?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
It doesn't change the outcome, so if we could please- Okay, so for the record, Councilmember Hernandez will be recorded as a no, so that is 10 ayes, 4 noes.
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilmember DeLeon.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just had one slip up. I want to call item 29 for comments. 29.
29, Mr. DeLeon, you'd like to call it special for comments, sir?
Yes.
Oh, okay, and 29 has not been held, so a public hearing has not been held, so we will mark it special for comments for now, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Do we have any other? Oh, yes, we can also take up item 32 now. Is that right, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so item number 32 is now before us. Do any members wish to be heard on this item?
No, Mr. President, there was no amendment on 32. It was just a motion by Councilmember Bloomingfield to move the Budget and Finance and Innovation Report, seconded by you, sir.
Very good. That item's now before us, so let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
14 ayes.
Very good, thank you. So with that, we can now proceed to the public comment portion of our meeting. So I'd like to ask the clerk and the city attorney to please read the instructions for public comment.
Yes, sir. As indicated on the agenda, members of the public wishing to offer public comment should call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 1605358466, and then press pound. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted to the meeting, press star 9 to request to speak. When it's your turn to speak in automated Zoom voice, we'll ask you to press star 6 to unmute. Again, call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 1605358466, then press pound. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted to the meeting, press star 9 to request to speak. When it's your turn to speak in automated Zoom voice, we'll ask you to press star 6 to unmute.
To members of the public, we have a slightly new procedure. To people providing public comment, when it is your turn to speak, either at the podium or on the phone, please state which of the agenda items you would like to speak to. You will have one minute per item, up to three minutes total, for the items open for public comment. We will tell you when your time is up. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you are not on topic, or if we cannot tell whether you are on topic- If you are not on topic, or if we cannot tell whether you are on topic, you will get one brief warning from me or the president. At that point, you need to immediately and clearly get on topic. If you do not do so, or if you again stray off topic, you will forfeit the rest of your speaking time, and we will move on to the next speaker. The items open for public comment during this regular meeting are 1, 20 through 29, and 33. So again, let me repeat, the items that are open for public comment during this regular meeting are 1, 20 through 29, and 33. Members of the public may also speak for up to one minute for general public comment, which will be held at the end of the meeting. During general public comment, members of the public may speak to any of the items or anything else under the city's subject matter jurisdiction. For members of the public calling in, when it is your turn to speak, an automated message from Zoom will prompt you to press star six to unmute yourself. If you do not do so, council staff will prompt you once more. At that point, you need to immediately unmute yourself, or unfortunately, you will forfeit your speaking time, and we will have to move on to the next caller. Finally, because of a brief time delay between the live meeting and the broadcast, two things are important. First, when it's your turn to speak, or when you're waiting for your turn to speak, please keep an ear to the phone so you know in real time when it is your turn to press star six to unmute yourself. Second, if you're listening to this meeting on another device, please turn down the volume on that device immediately when it is your turn to speak. Between the time delay and feedback, it will cause a great deal of confusion if you continue to listen on your other device. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. So with that, I'm going to call a number of names, and as I call your name, please make your way to your left-hand side of the council chambers. You do not need to speak in the order that I call you, but please don't line up until I do call you so that we can make sure that we don't have overcrowding over there. So first names I'm going to call are Leonardo Vilches, Ofelia Platon, Teresa Alfaro, Soledad Zavala, Leonardo Vilches Zarate, Gisela Martinez, Mike Greenspan, and Wayne Spindler.
Yeah, this is on item 29. Basically, we're here in support of item 29.
One moment, please, sir. If I can ask the conversations that are going on around the council chambers, please, if you have to discuss something, please take it out of the chambers so that we can focus our attention on the speakers who are here to speak. Please.
And, sir, if you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under?
Leonardo Vilches, item 29.
Okay, so you have one minute for item 29. Go ahead.
This is preventing the demolitions on Boyle Heights. For the last 30 years, we've seen many demolitions that have displaced many communities. The kind of housing that is being built, whether it's affordable or private or commercial, is not serving the needs of the community, and we want that to stop. Even though it's a temporary motion, we would like that to be expanded, but it's a good beginning to prevent the damage that is happening in the community. Basically, the solutions that are provided by the council right now to prevent gentrification and displacement are not helpful. Giving more rights to people so they can fight in court is not helpful. Expanding the lawyers is not helpful. What is helpful is to keep people in their homes and stopping the destruction of these homes in our communities. We've seen the very low-income families, the people who live under rent control, who are the ones who need this housing, and most of the housing that has been demolished in Boyle Heights is rent-controlled housing. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Mi nombre es Ofelia Platon y voy a hablar al punto 29. Yo vivo en Boyle Heights y estoy viendo todos los problemas que está causando las demoliciones, ¿no?
Hi, how are you? I'm going to speak on about item 29, and my name is Ofelia.
Okay, este, sí, estamos viendo ahorita y estoy a favor de que no, este, de esta... para que no haya más demoliciones.
I am in favor of this, and I am in support so we don't have any more demolitions.
Boyle Heights es una de las que mucha gente está entrando para demoler, y estamos viendo los desplazos, estamos viendo que no hay parqueadero para la gente. Los vecinos siempre se están peleando, se están enojando por los parqueaderos, ¿y por qué? Porque en uno de los edificios...
Un segundo, señora. Boyle Heights is a place that we're seeing a lot of displacements, we're seeing a lot of demolition. We're also seeing that there is a lack of parking, and also the neighbors are constantly fighting.
Y pues estamos a favor de que no haya más demoliciones. Una porque también es otra de que están haciendo edificios de múltiples unidades en donde la gente está pagando de tres mil a cuatro mil dólares en un cuartito, y son...
Un segundo, señora. And also what we're seeing in Boyle Heights is that there is a lot of demolitions, and they are building really big buildings, and that they are charging three or four thousand dollars for a very small room.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items you would like to speak to?
Buenos dias. Si puede, por favor, decirme su nombre y del asunto que usted quisiera hablar?
Okay, mi nombre es Teresa Alfaro.
Hi, my name is Teresa Alfaro.
Y yo estoy aquí para decirles que, por favor, paren esas demoliciones.
And I'm here to ask you that to please stop those demolitions.
Porque yo estoy haciendo afectada.
Because I'm being affected. I'm very sorry.
Tengo tres meses para desalojar.
I have three months to move.
Y esto no es fácil.
And this is not easy.
Pero voy a seguir luchando.
But I'm going to continue fighting.
Para seguir en mi comunidad.
So I can stay in my community.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Soledad Zavala, and I'm here to support the item 29 because, first of all, I'm a first-gen student attending college, and I am here representing not only myself and my family but also my neighborhood here in Boyle Heights. And I am here to ask for stop for demolitions. They are causing many evictions, as one of my neighbors just passed and saying that she only has three more months. Not only are they... not only are evictions increasing, but also that there's a lot of high rents. And I, yeah, I support the motion, and I hope that you guys all consider us as Boyle Heights community members here representing today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items you would like to speak to?
My name is Leonardo Vilches Zarate. I'd like to speak to item number 29.
Okay, so you have one minute.
Okay, so we're here to support the motion as Unión de Vecinos, the east-side local of the Los Angeles tenants' union. There are many demolitions taking place in Boyle Heights. There are currently, there are 32 permits open, and all of these apartments are to basically build luxury housing or warehouses for the poor. We're working with 16 buildings where there are 24 tenants each sharing a kitchen and one bathroom. And so the housing that's being built is not affordable housing. The housing that's being built is warehouses for poor people. And on the other hand, what they do build as housing is luxury housing for people who make seventy thousand dollars a year, because that's the area median income for affordable housing. So, and then in Boyle Heights, the people make between 27 and 36 thousand dollars a year. So this housing is not being built for the residents of Boyle Heights, and so we ask that everybody support the motion to stop demolitions in Boyle Heights temporarily.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, sir, can you tell me your name again, please?
Leonardo Vilches Zarate.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items you would like to speak to?
Mi nombre es Gisela Martinez.
Buenos dias. Me puede decir, por favor, su nombre y su asunto del cual usted quiere hablar?
Si, yo vengo apoyando, este, la moción 29, este, porque he estado siendo afectada desde hace ya más de dos años.
I'm here on support of item 29 because I've been affected by this for the last two years.
Si, el dueño me ha estado, este, acosando a modo de sacarme, y me ha dado 120 días para salirme de la casa.
The owner has been harassing me so I can leave, and he has given me 120 days to leave the house.
Porque quieren demoler el lugar donde estoy viviendo.
Because they want to demolish the place where I'm living.
Y no me gustaría que las demás familias estuvieran pasando esta misma situación que yo estoy pasando.
And I wouldn't like for any other families to go through what I'm going through.
En toda esta área hay demasiadas demoliciones, y este, ya no hay estacionamientos para las personas, y es un gran problema.
In all these areas, there is a lot of demolitions. There is no enough, there isn't any parking for people to park, and it's a huge problem for the people who will live there.
Por lo tanto, apoyo esta moción, y no quisiera que siguiera pasando para estas familias de Boyle Heights.
Therefore, I support this motion, and I don't want this situation to happen to any other families.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. I'm going to call out a few more names. One moment, please. Rob Quan, Sunny Bridges, Stacy Cigar Bollinger, Mike Greenspan, Arnold Sacks, Candido. I think I already called them, Teresa Alfaro and Soledad Zavala, Agni Aldus. Okay. Go right ahead, Mr. Greenspan.
Okay, Mike Greenspan, all items and general public comment.
So this is only for the items that are open for public comment on the regular agenda?
Right, I got it.
So you have three minutes for the items. That's 1, 20 through 29, and 33. So please begin.
And then general public comment.
General public comment will be at the end of this meeting, the regular meeting.
Now, let's look at item 20. That's a public works project, and of the almost twenty-two thousand dollars, then thirteen thousand of it's for overtime. Since when do we need to have overtime before straight time in our projects? I mean, this is a waste of the money. It really is. But then, that's how the city operates. Well, let's look for, oh, sanitation services. Council District 12. Some of us are very lucky, not... under your plan, we've got Republic. Picking up the trash is an option with Republic. We used to have waste management. They did a great job. But Republic does a shitty job. I've had plenty of arguments with Republic. I've even called up Paul Krikorian's office and talked to him on the phone when they didn't pick up our trash for three consecutive days. So it's... I hate to say it, I guess city sanitation does a better job than Republic. Usually, it should be the other way around, the private companies, but not with Republic. Now, we'll also look at 100,000 for Council District 12 with the Neighborhood Service Enhancement. Well, vehicle recycling. I went to a vehicle recycle... I went to a recycling place in that district, and they were funny about taking batteries, even though they took batteries. It was like they rationed them. You could only give a certain amount, so beware, folks, beware. We also have, oh, good old 25, that LAPD on-site youth facility. Folks, if you like Measure J, which was passed in 1989, and they said that the Valley would get an additional new police station, but they ran out of money, you'll love this. After all, that's how they operate. They overpromise, they underdeliver, they can never get it done on time, and we're the ones that pay. The only thing they seem to have money for is that $5 million, those racist white Republican pigs who didn't want to see a spot to go in the mayor's office and getting behind RIC, KKK, Caruso. But as far as getting their facilities built, whatever it may be, they're always running out of money before yours gets built. I just thought you'd like to know. Now, a simplified ballot measure to approve or disapprove. If it's for a redistricting commission, I'm all for it. It took 40 years for the state to get a redistricting commission for their legislature. So if we get it any time under 10, five or 10 years, we're doing pretty well considering. Now, public comment.
No, we'll be taking general public comment later. Yeah, okay. Next speaker, please.
Which items would you like to speak to?
Yes, in which public comment card did I sign up under, sir?
So which items would you like to speak to?
Yes. Well, we want to speak on all the goddamn fucking piece of shit items.
So you have three minutes for the items. That's 1, 20 through 29, and 33. So please begin.
That's right. So let's talk about item number 28, known as Paint the Ocho. Let's see here, we have a city attorney that wants to waive an attorney-client privilege and work product privilege so Mr. Lee's private attorney can also represent the commissioner before the Ethics Commission. This is two waivers in two fucking weeks, and the attorney he wants to hire has millions of dollars in outside-city contracts for the city at the same time. Let's give this conflict a hand.
Wow, that's beautiful. Shit, I liked that. Did you...
Yes, so in other words, you get paid by the city on one hand, and then on the other hand, you get paid to represent the wrongdoers before the same city. So you get paid twice to do the same fucked-up job to fuck the public out of their tax dollars. I thoroughly approve of this because I'm a corrupt puppet. This is bully bull. I'm the corrupt puppet. And then we get to item 29 with this demolition bullshit. You want to throw out all the people. Look, Nethia doesn't give a fuck, Padilla doesn't give a fuck, everybody's on their phone, just going to throw the people out of the rent-controlled apartments, demolish everything, and then reconstruct brand-new, pretty apartments with pretty carpeting and windows so you can charge market-rate rents. And then later, they file bankruptcy. Yes, they do. And then your rents go up even more. So we want to say fuck the city attorney, fuck the police, fuck LASSA, and fuck the city council because they're pieces of shit. That's why we don't like what you do. We don't dislike you, we dislike what you do. Then we have other fucked-up items.
Which ones?
Number 20, fuck number 20. Number 21, fuck number 21. And number 22, I say fuck number 22 as well. See what they're doing up there? Yes, see, the city attorney right now is conferring with his outside council again. And then we have AVOX sitting here and walking across here. See, he's been working here for decades as he helps the next available corrupt council member.
Move on to an agenda item, or you're done.
You see how that works? See the petty pink skin? Mmm, yes. So we will get to item number one if we may read that into the record?
No, that's not eligible for public comment. Speak to agenda items.
Yes, but the other items that are available are all bullshit. Fuck you, you petty pink-skin dictator piece of shit. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Good morning.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
All items.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items. Please begin.
Great. Item thirty-three is just referencing that closed-session items are gonna be heard because of significant exposure to litigation regarding three potential cases. It's kind of amazing how often this body has to recess into closed session to litigate what's usually liability claims, where the city has failed to meet certain obligations, like making sure sidewalks are safe and accessible, or making sure the police aren't setting off explosives on the sidewalk, or, you know, all these myriad things that the city might have a claim against them and they have to pay out millions of liability. And then when you wanna do something like fix the sidewalk, they say we have no money for that. So it's an interesting sort of cycle. Item twenty-one is regarding funding to support operational and capital costs for Jewish family services. I really like this motion because this organization is one of the few in Los Angeles that offers twenty-four-seven support for domestic violence victims. They actually pick up the phone when you call. I've completed presentations and workshops about domestic violence and what resources exist locally. We have this thing called DART with the LAPD, and the thing is, is it's pretty and effective. So it's good that we have these programs that are run by private or religious institutions so that someone has someone to call or a place to go when they're a victim of domestic violence, because as we know, domestic violence is one of the main reasons why people, particularly women, become homeless. So I'm glad to see this on the agenda. We'll just go to item twenty-nine. I like this item, although I wish it were a little bit more expansive. Also, I would appreciate more specific language when we're talking about an interim control ordinance prohibiting the issuance of demolition permits on rent-stabilized multifamily housing and covenanted affordable housing units. And then it goes on specifically to mention other permits affecting contributing features of historical districts and things like that, and it mentions Boyle Heights, the Brooklyn Corridor Historic Center, and specific areas. So I'm curious if this demolition permit prohibition applies to everywhere, and then those specific neighborhoods apply to like the second half of that, or if this is all just within the Boyle Heights region? Because we really need this throughout Los Angeles. We can't keep having landlords using like the Ellis Act as an illegitimate reason to displace people and demolish affordable housing to build luxury condos or what's affordable to someone making seventy or eighty thousand dollars a year.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Morning, Groth. Items one, twenty-two, twenty-five, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items. Please begin.
I actually really do appreciate the council president amending a motion on item one. We should get the police out-of-business permits. Just pretty damn straightforward. For item number twenty-two and twenty-five, pleased and elated to have staffer B joining us here. It's shocking that he is doing what he is only useful for here, shoveling money to LAPD. And I think it's a brilliant contrast. We have a motion recently to put three-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars towards resurfacing an LAPD driving course. That's coming from the Sunshine Canyon Trust Fund. That's what he does with LAPD overtime, LAFD overtime, but what has he done to address the LA Times story we heard this week? About bacteria bubbling up and just spewing out odors in his neighborhood? Where there are schools where they had to cancel recess? They had to stop the kids from lining up outside? But what is he doing there? We haven't even seen a freaking motion. Any other one of you would have introduced a motion by now. For item number twenty-seven, this is the Streets LA motion, and I just wanna emphasize again for my council member in District One, if myself or my cute little dog have an untimely death, it's gonna be in your district. And there are multiple locations that we walk around where I almost get hit by a car at least once a month. So I just think it's really important to recognize why this motion is here. It's because of council's continued dysfunction. That little ploy, that distraction motion that Nury propped up last year, still nowhere to be seen as far as that report back. Number twenty-eight, this is on the Ethics Commission and outside counsel. I think it's really worth mentioning that we still have a vacancy on our Ethics Commission, even though the charter says it has to be filled within thirty days. It's been six months, and our council president still hasn't appointed anybody to the Ethics Commission. So maybe that'd be a really, really nice thing for Paul, Caro, y'all to focus on over your winter break. Get somebody on the Ethics Commission. Does the charter not mean anything to you? There have been multiple attempts to hire outside counsel by staffer B, two different firms to trigger conflicts of interest, waste Ethics Commission money, and delay the actual hearing of his case. This is exactly why the Ethics Commission needs outside counsel. Yet, over the last fourteen months, we haven't seen your fancy little government reform committee take that up. Just amazing stuff. Staring you right in the face and you just tap away. Hope you think about some things over winter break.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items you would like to speak to?
Sunny Bridges. And I wanna comment on one, twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five. That'll be it.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items. Please begin.
All right, so item twenty-four is an item approving money for the illumination of City Hall to recognize LAFC making it to the MLS final. Did you know that during that fourteen-hour illumination of City Hall, at least one-hundred-and-sixty-eight Palestinians were killed by Israel in Gaza? Did you know the day that you chose to illuminate City Hall, Israel struck over four-hundred-and-fifty targets? Now, what were these targets? Hospitals, refugee camps, schools, mosques, and homes, but more specifically?
Sir, that has nothing to do with that agenda item.
That is about the...
Please move on to the agenda item.
I'm telling you what happened during the time that you illuminated City Hall. This is well within my right.
Speak to the agenda item or you'll forfeit your time.
And I'm gonna tell you. I don't understand. It's well within my right. Let's go to Groth. Pause my time.
This is your opportunity to speak about the items that are open on the agenda item. So...
Agenda is illumination of City Hall, and I'm illustrating to you, you gotta stop my time so I can explain to you what I'm saying. And what I'm saying is, during the time of the illumination, I am allowed to dictate what was going on in the world. It's never been a problem before, but of course, because I'm speaking about Palestine, it now is an issue. So again, I'm speaking about...
The illumination item is about the MLS Cup final.
I'm saying, why hasn't the genocide of over twenty-three thousand Palestinians...
I'm gonna ask you one more time politely. Please stick to the agenda items. If you'd like to come back for general public comment, you can speak to anything under this council's subject matter jurisdiction.
My time was running this whole time, so you're gonna, you're gonna give me back my time?
Okay.
Are you gonna give me back my time?
If you're gonna speak to the agenda item, go ahead.
But you're not giving me back my time.
Just go ahead, I'll adjust it at the end.
Okay, so again, I just told you. So I'm wondering why, again, the murder of twenty-three thousand Palestinians still hasn't illuminated you all so-called leaders...
Okay, so you refuse to speak to the agenda.
No, here, I'm going to go to item twenty-five now.
You're gonna go ahead and forfeit your time and let's just speak to the agenda.
Now, at a time when Israel has killed over nine thousand children, left over eighteen thousand Palestinian children injured in this land...
Speaker, the council president said that you forfeited your time. So your time is expired. You forfeited the rest of your time. You refuse to speak to the agenda after multiple warnings. You're done. You're done. Have a seat. Have a seat and be silent.
So you need to vacate the podium. You can come back for general public comment, but you are now disrupting this meeting.
Okay, you are disrupting the meeting. You're ordered removed from this meeting pursuant to Rule twelve. Mr. Reedy, leave our meeting. Pursuant to Rule twelve, you are excluded from this meeting. Have a, have a nice day, Mr. Reedy. You're excluded from this meeting. You're, what you're trying to do is disrupt the work of the city council, and I'm not gonna have it. So you're done.
And for the record, the speaker only went to the agenda items after being warned multiple times to get back on topic.
Leave, you're done. Have a nice day.
And after being advised that he could come back for general public comment.
Jason Reedy continues to shout, continues to shout, continues to defy my instructions. Leave the meeting. Sergeants, please show Mr. Reedy to the door. So members of the public are waiting their turn to speak while Mr. Reedy wants to draw attention to himself by disrupting this meeting. And we can't proceed. So to those who are waiting to speak, I apologize that you have to be delayed by this selfish disruption.
Selfish disruption. Look, the agenda, you're okay. The agenda, I mean, you're okay. Don't take that. The agenda, I'm really, I'm not back.
And Mr. Reedy is continuing to shout. We have now waited multiple minutes till we can resume public comment.
Okay, first the fuck up, I'm sorry. First the fuck up, I'm sorry. First the fuck up, I'm sorry. This is the reality of the government, I'm sorry. Fuck you, fuck. Fuck you, fuck. Fuck you, fuck. Fuck you, fuck. Fuck you, fuck.
All right, next speaker, please.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Good morning, sir. There's a lot of items I'd like to speak to, but I'm gonna speak on twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-two. And I'd like to speak about the, the property owned by LACMA, the lighting district, the lighting that you were gonna do for...
So, Speaker, you have three minutes for the items, up to one minute per item. So please begin.
Okay. Number twenty-seven refers to the ballot. So I'm wondering, are you gonna use, you gonna use the public volunteers to, to do the voting? I'm wondering, 'cause you're gonna use a marked ballot to, for the vote that's coming up? I don't think that's a good idea. Using a marked ballot is not good, 'cause it tilts the vote away from democracy. And you don't have a democracy, then you don't have, then you're going downhill. You're swirling in the toilet. So you need to have public volunteers, at least pay the public volunteers to work the ballot, the elections that are coming up. You don't do that, you have no democracy. There was a question about ethics. Huh, ethics in LA County? Woo! There was a question of using outside attorneys. I'm wondering if you're gonna use in-house attorneys or outhouse attorneys? You might use outhouse attorneys. It'd be, be more suited to the shit that goes on in city council. The budget for the county of Los Angeles, including city, county, and metro, is over almost eighty, eighty billion dollars for this fiscal year. I don't know if you've been around the city at all, and you've noticed the housing on the sidewalks, the housing in the bus benches, the housing in the vehicles, the, the motor homes, the trash, the graffiti, the streets are fucked up, the sidewalks are fucked up. What isn't fucked? Oh, the air is fucked up. You have the dirtiest air in the whole country. You haven't addressed an issue about CEQA. You haven't addressed an issue about the dirty buses. You haven't addressed an issue about the shitty subways. No big deal. No, no big fucking deal. And then we can go to talk about recycling. Is it recycling or reciling? Especially since Sunshine Canyon Landfill has been privatized DBA Monsanto. How the fuck did that happen? Wasn't there a collaboration between the city of Los Angeles and the county of, Los Angeles County? And you've gone away? Is this gonna be La Land or is it gonna be L period A period? Again, I emphasize the fact, the periods are important, 'cause the federal government and the state government doesn't recognize La Land. They recognize Los Angeles, L-A, L period A period. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Oh, more equality.
Morning, sir. One eight eight one, denied public comment on Wednesday.
Good morning. So which items would you like to speak to?
Sir, I would like to, all public items, but I'm gonna start with one and then twenty-one, sir. And then we'll hold off for public comment later?
Correct, yes.
Which you will call upon me.
You have three minutes for the items. Please begin.
Item number one is about police permits. You know, I wanna thank the police officers who handled this situation just right now. You know why? Because some people are fighting for the truth, but others are fighting to see if they can get a lawsuit. So gentlemen, I wanna thank you, and the female police officer, thank you for the wonderful job. But I don't think police should be dealing with everything from permits to trying to handle crowds in this, this council. Let's go to item twenty-one is domestic violence. You know, domestic violence can happen right here, and I'm trying to avoid it. I've already been attacked. I do not want to see anyone else hurting this. And Mr. Krikorian, Mr. Krikorian, you need to pay attention to this as he talks to his staff. The, the problem with this, I saw so much hate, and I understand the pain of the Palestinian supporters, but there is hate there. And when your family has served this country, died for this country, and when you see people...
So, Speaker, I'm gonna ask that you stick to the agenda items, please. You can speak to anything you'd like under this council's jurisdiction during general public comment.
In the conflict, but again, who started it? And Israel has to mention...
I'm sorry, Candido, you need to speak to the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Wait, number twenty-eight, council? That's it?
Just number, item number twenty-eight, so you have one minute for item twenty-eight. Please begin.
Isn't that a nice Christmas present to you? Number twenty-eight, who is the city commissioner? What's the name? That's all I wanna know, is the name. Council funk that wrote this up on the city report, did not return my calls, didn't return other attorneys' calls, saying, who's the individual? With Mr. Lee, he was named on lock, the conflicts themselves waivers, that's kinda commonplace, but they always name the person. I would like to know the name of the city commissioner. That's all I wanna know, and I can't get any information on that. My, was a couple of council deputies, legislative deputies, told me that are non-attorneys, it's attorney-client privilege, we can't disclose the name. I said, okay, who do I ask? Oh, call the city attorney. All I wanna know is the name, or if you could amend to put the name in there. That's all I asked for. Thank you.
And I'm sorry, sir, can you tell me your name again?
What?
What was your name again?
I don't get it. If you wanna throw me out, you can.
No, I'm just asking what name you signed up under, so I can take you off the list.
Trust me, nobody's just...
Okay, never mind. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for being helpful. All right. Next speaker, please. Teresa Alfaro. Soledad Zavala.
Number one, twenty. Number one, under twenty, what? Oh, yeah, yeah, okay. Good morning. I will speak on number one and then number twenty-five, and then later on, general public comment.
So you have two minutes for the items. Please begin.
But, but hold on, hold on. Do I have to sign up again for the general public comment or no?
No.
No, okay. So number twen, number one is police commission. First of all, I'm here to voice my support to the chief and then the police commission because I went to several different police commission meetings, and I feel that the police commission and then the board continue to be intimidated... police commission and then the board continue to be intimidated by special interest, special speaker. But I just feel that we need a police commission, a strong police commission, and a strong police commission that supports law and order, supports law enforcement, not be intimidated all day long in the board of police commission. When an officer's rights are being violated, the police commission must have the authority to protect the officer, not discipline the officer. And regarding the police commission fees or whatever, yes, I'm happy that it's a more responsibility that allows the police commission and LAPD in general to do more about their job, to do more about their services, in order to make the city a safe place. Number 25, about the LAPD Topanga area for the youth services facility in the number 25, agenda 25. And I am here to support this agenda item, because what I see that in many part of the city of LA, when you, without guidance, without mentorship, without, you know, special programs, what I see, those kids end up on the street. The kids end up becoming a looter, the kids end up becoming a rioter, the kids become, you know, doing all sort of crime, rape, and then killing, or whatever. So, I'm really happy that if LAPD Topanga area can have this special facility, and then they can actually teach some kids to do good, so they don't have to end up on the street, they don't have to end up to be a looter, rioter, killer, and reaper. So, I'm here to support LAPD, I'm here to support law enforcement, and the victim, Lives Matter, LAPD, Lives Matter.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna go next to the callers on the phones who wish to speak about agenda items. And so, Madam Clerk, if you could please, or Mr. City Attorney, if you could please repeat the items for the folks on the phone that are... The items that are open for public comment now.
Yes, Mr. President. So, the items that are open for public comment during this regular meeting are 1, 20 through 29, and 33. So, if you're on the phones and you're a member of the public who wishes to speak on these items, please press star nine to raise your hand to request to speak now.
First caller, which items would you like to speak on?
Greetings. It's Eric Previn from Studio City.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Yeah, I'd like to speak on the available gen... The available items on the agenda. I'd like to give a general public comment later, so you have my name and know that I'm in queue.
So, you have three minutes for the items that are open for public comment. Please begin now.
Okay, cool. I'm not a big fan of this conflict waiver, you know? I gotta be honest. This is a city that has a lot of litigation, and one speaker raised a very good point, which was, "What about the identity of the particular commissioner?" I think like, we need to understand that when people recuse and kind of step away and acknowledge conflict, it's very important to understand why and what the details are. And the city council does it a different way. They just kind of like, step out so that Kocorian and Price don't have to vote on the tough ones, I guess. But then there are myriad items that are very similarly about rent and about, you know, municipal government and fighting with the city and being a landowner, but they don't recuse on those. So, it's not really kosher. And then this one in particular, John Lee, who is staffer B, and had a big problem, got the same law firm, and as I believe it was articulated fairly clearly, this firm has millions of dollars of contracts with the city of Los Angeles. So, I understand why he wants to have somebody who's on the inside.
So, Mr. Previn, you've used your minute on item 28. Please move on to one of the other items. Thank you.
Sure. Can you just remember which ones they are?
Yes, items 1, 20 through 29, and 33.
Okay. Well, 20, 20 through 29, let me just get to the page. Thank you for your indulgence. You've got a very confusing agenda, we'll give you that. But I think that putting the general public comment at the very end has been hurtful. We're not on the continuation agenda, right? Or is that allowed?
So, item number 33 is on the continuation agenda. So, if you'd like to speak to item 33, you can.
Yeah, I'm gonna speak to 32. Okay. So, KPMG is a firm. I wrote about this yesterday. So, they're a big kind of auditing accounting firm. And what they're glancing at here alongside Workday Inc., or Workday LLP, it comes across two different ways to make it hard for you to see. Workday's been working on our HR and personnel system. It's cost hundreds of millions of dollars already, because it's such an archaic, weird system with all kinds of different kinds of 50,000 employees. But people in the public are really curious, why are we paying KPMG and all these like, they call them compliance corp... I forget, you know, the little extra companies that come in and feed off of the debacle. When the debacle should be handled by leadership, and the way leadership would work in this case, is you would flush the old system completely, not try to integrate it in a complicated, expensive, endless failure. And my heart goes out to Ted Ross, the head of ITA, who not only has tried hard and put a great team together, but has also failed the public by shrinking each member of the public as they speak down to the size of hashtag Blooming Fields knows. Why we can't see...
Caller, your time has expired. Next caller?
Next caller, which items would you like to speak on?
Yes, good morning. Item 1, 27, 28, and 29.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items. Please begin.
For the LAPD, it'd be a great thing, keep these kids busy if we can go ahead and give them something to do. They can go ahead and do these permits. We know that they can work, a lot of people can work remotely from home. There's no way, reason that you need to tie up LAPD with overtime money or that kind of wages to do clerical work, when you got kids in college that can get that work, get the experience, and be, come back to work and serve this city. Student programs are great, that giving that money back to have an officer in overtime rate would make no sense whatsoever, when you can employ ten student workers at that rate. Number 29. Like Mr. De Leon had said, when we go into construction, who are we building these places for? Marquise? I get it. You USC campus construction out in that site? No problem. You, you know, you're kind of concentrating on giving these students somewhere to live. But when you go into Boyle Heights, and you're building apartments, are they gonna be family sustainable? Low income? You guys keep using the word low income. San Diego has a contract that they can make these homes at $375,000. I'll give you the information as soon as anyone asks for it. But it's up to you guys what you wanna do. $800,000 homes, or $400,000 homes that people in the area can buy? You went to Father Saint Mariachi Hotel, that the Mariachis weren't allowed to get back in there. Now, you can go 80 years back. Chavez Ravine, Dodger Stadium, same thing. These people are promised everything, and at the end, they have nothing to hold, not a note, and the city always comes back and says, "Well, they really didn't own it." The fireworks explosions downtown over there, same thing. These people are out there, left in, out of their homes.
Caller, you've used your one minute on item number 29. Please move on to one of the other items. Thank you.
Okay, 27.
Go ahead.
We go, all these different things that were going on, and... The ballot thing. We have the same scenario going on here for these ballots. When Emilia Padilla's crew was walking around Arlita, when she was getting elected during the special election, she had them picking up ballots from the residents. And when I told them they couldn't do that, they says, "Yes, we can." Who says we can't? And that's how Emilia Padilla's crew came to the door.
Caller, your time has expired.
Next caller, which items would you like to speak on? Caller with the last four digits, 9519, please press star six to mute.
Yes, this is Jason. I'm a Smokin' Scan viewer, and I'm just here today so I won't get fined.
Okay, so which of the items would you like to speak to?
I'm just here so I won't get fined.
So, understood. You can call back during general public comment. So, next caller?
Next caller, which items would you like to speak on?
Yeah, hi. I wanna come back, well, I'm gonna do item number 28, but I wanna stay on the line for public comment later.
So, which of the items would you like to speak to?
28.
Okay, so you have one minute for item number 28. Please begin.
Yes, hi. DanielGus.substack.com. At 12:30, I'm gonna be on 790 KABC, The John Phillips Show with Royal Oaks Legal Analyst. We're gonna be talking about, among other things, this item. And do you guys see the irony? This morning, your colleague, Curran Price, was arraigned on conflict of interest, and embezzlement, and perjury, and here you are encouraging the waiver of another conflict of interest before the Ethics Commission. And a week ago, you tried to censor me from commenting about a department bureaucracy that you're opening, that accomplished nothing, that will help council members identify conflict of interest. Do you guys see the irony of 28 and your peer, Curran Price, being arraigned this morning? Where is he? He was in court fighting for his life on conflict of interest, and you're here encouraging the waiver of a conflict of interest a week after...
Mr. Gus, your time has expired.
Thank you, Mr. Gus. And just, of course, that item has nothing to do with members' conflict of interest, it has to do with a law firm's request for a waiver of its legal conflict of interest. So, I'm sure you'll get that right when you talk about it on the radio. Alright, next speaker, please.
Next speaker, which items would you like to speak on?
Item 29.
Okay, so you have one minute for item 29. Please begin.
Thank you. This is Sherry Bonstall from Jupper Mingles. I represent Caesar Chavez 888 LLC, who owns a housing development project, which is 50 units, including five units affordable to extremely low-income households. And it's located in the Brooklyn corridor, Brooklyn Avenue Neighborhood Corridor area, which is subject to the ICO. We submitted a letter to the city council opposing the ICO for numerous reasons. One is that it violates the Housing Accountability Act, which is, and other state housing laws, because it prohibits existing and proposed housing development projects in this area. The second is that it limits housing production that would otherwise be required to the city's housing element. The third is that the ICO does not make the required findings under Government Code 65858, because it doesn't show that there's a substantial adverse impact caused by these housing development projects. And it also violates city charter and...
Caller, your time has expired.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Next caller, which items would you like to speak on? Caller with the last four digits, 5554, please press star six.
Hello. Hello. I'm on my way for general public comment.
Okay. Thank you, Sean.
Fuck the items. Fuck the items.
Next caller?
Next caller, which items would you like to speak on?
Good afternoon. This is Brock Landers, Los Angeles private investigator.
Which items would you like to speak to?
How are you guys doing? I'd like to speak on the open, open items, please.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items. That would be item 1, 20 through 29, and 33. Please begin.
Okay, and can you put me on hold after, so I can do general public comment as well?
So, you can stay on the line.
Uh, let's see, number... Number one. If you wanted to fund the police, why should we pay more fees when dealing with the police? It seems pretty hypocritical for us to pay more for less service. Not that hypocrisy is new to any of you. At least you could hide it like Bob does with his beard. I would support these extra fees if they would go down to cutting down the trees, so that we don't miss as many chases and arrests on Smokin' Scan. And it would also be helpful to Damon's blood pressure. And if we learned one thing from the COVID lockdowns, it was, if it saves one life, it's worth it. We at Smokin' Scan also appreciate the repaving of the LAPD driving course. It's made for more entertaining chases. 24. Why are you even celebrating second place? I think that's one of the problems that we're seeing in LA now, is that we're okay with mediocrity. Sunny Bridges, how many times did you condemn Hamas during the time it was lit up? 25. To the gentleman talking about the KKK, I hate to correct you, but the KKK was started by Democrats. If Republicans are so racist, why is there such a...
Mr. Landers, I'm gonna need you to stick onto the agenda items, so please stick to the agenda items.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I could comment on what other people commented on the items on. Is that not allowed?
No, please, please stick to the agenda items.
Oh, my apologies. Let's see, 26. Maybe the reason there's been an open seat on the Ethics Commission for six months is Paul doesn't know anybody ethical. 28. Where are we at? 28, there we go. You screwed me up, cut me off earlier. Relative to the request for the waiver of conflict of interest for the law firm of Dewey Scrum and Howe, how much money has Dewey Scrum and Howe given to the city council? I think that would be interesting to find out. 29. Why shouldn't the people that own the property be able to demolish the property, or what's on the property, and build what they want? What's in it for them to keep the low-income housing? People always complaining about the rent increases, and 70K a year isn't luxury. I don't, I don't know what you've been doing for a living, but maybe you should, you know, finish elementary school, and you realize that. Do you like it when people tell you what to do with your stuff? Why don't you guys start a GoFundMe, pull your money together, get a property, and then keep it exactly how it is, and see how that goes for you? I will wait for my general public comment, and the...
Okay, next caller?
Cut looks good today.
Thank you. Next caller?
Next caller, which items would you like to speak on? Caller with the last four digits, 1264, please press star six to unmute.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Which items would you like to speak to?
Can you hear me?
Yes. Which items would you like to speak to?
Uh, number 29. Yeah, Smokin' Scan kinda makes a good point there. But kinda reminds me of Chavez Ravine, unfortunately. Lot of people getting kicked out, just abused, and taken advantage of. And that's all I wanted to say. I, I, I think you should do more. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take one more caller.
Next caller, which items would you like to speak on?
Okay, is this public comment?
Sir, this is only for the items. That's items 1, 20 through 29, and 33.
Okay, so are you gonna lower my hand again, and I'm gonna be disconnected like you did last week?
So, if you'd like to speak during general public comment, you can stay in the line, and then raise your hand to press star nine when we open general public comment.
Your, your systems failed, because this has been done, and everyone's telling you...
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
You're just doing the same thing.
Thank you very much. Do we have, do you wish to speak on the agenda items? Or did you already? Okay, next caller then, please. One more caller on the agenda.
No more hands raised.
Okay, very good. Then we've taken, we've completed public comment on all agenda items, and public comment is now closed on all agenda items. Madam Clerk, what's next available for us to vote on?
Mr. President, council may now vote on items 20 through 24, 27, and 28, sir.
Very good. Those items are now before us. I see no members wishing to be heard, so let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
13 nyes.
Very good. What's next?
Next would be item 25, sir.
And that item was called special by Councilmember Hernandez. Councilmember Hernandez, on item number 25. That item is now before us. Do any members wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
11 nyes, two noes.
Alright, that will take us next to item 29. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President. Item 29 was called special by Councilmember De Leon.
Alright, we'll go ahead and hold that one on the desk for the moment, and we'll go next to item number one. Do any members wish to be heard on item number one? As amended, seeing none, let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes. As amended, seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen eyes.
Thank you. Now we will go next to item number 29, which was called special by Councilmember De Leon. Councilmember De Leon.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. President. Uh, colleagues, today I stand before this council to emphasize the urgency of our collective responsibility to protect working-class residents from the immediate threats of gentrification, in this case, the residents who reside in the amazing neighborhood of Boyle Heights. The vibrant community of Boyle Heights is at a precipice, where we are preparing to approve a community plan update that will protect residents and businesses moving forward. But until it's approved, and let me end this call, until it's approved, we cannot afford to delay safeguarding their future. Earlier this week, Tuesday, and I think my colleagues, the City Council, took a significant step forward by giving the green light to the Boyle Heights Community Plan Update to put the brakes on gentrification happening right there. This plan represents our commitment to the well-being of Boyle Heights and its residents. However, we must also recognize that before that plan is approved, there are some folks, without a doubt, will have the opportunity to exploit and circumvent the spirit of this pending community plan update. That's why I have put forward item 29, this interim control ordinance, ICO, so that we can prevent anyone from trying to take advantage. To ensure that the unique identity of Boyle Heights is preserved and passed down to future generations, we need this ICO as a crucial tool to accomplish that. Our community is home to a significant number of renters, many living in older housing stock. They are the heart and soul of Boyle Heights, and they are particularly vulnerable to the displacement that comes from gentrification. Bottom line, the ICO is about protecting them from eviction and protecting their families. We have seen disturbing trends with the use of the Ellis Act and demolition permits targeting RSOs, rent stabilization ordinance units. The data is clear, Boyle Heights is facing a real threat to its affordable housing stock. By enacting the ICO, we empower Building Safety and the Planning Department to control the issuance of permits involving the demolition of existing occupied buildings with RSO units until the Boyle Heights Community Plan is finalized. Let me be clear, this ICO will send a very strong message to those who might try to exploit the timing of our community plan update. The ICO includes an urgency clause, making it effective immediately upon publication. So, colleagues, I ask for your swift and decisive action to protect our residents and the integrity of the Boyle Heights, uh, community. Colleagues, I certainly ask for an "I" vote, and, um, I hope that also, it's not just me in Boyle Heights, but that other council districts who are facing similar threats of gentrification displacement also adopt something that's similar, protect their residents as well. Mr. President, as well as colleagues, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Do any other members wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen eyes.
Very good, thank you very much. Uh, that will take us next to item number 26. Uh, this was called special by Councilmember Rahman. Councilmember Rahman?
I, um, I had a couple of questions, and I believe some of the departments are here who can answer it.
Sure. Sure, let's, uh, go ahead and, uh, which departments would you like to direct the questions to?
Um, perhaps BOE, if BOE is here.
Okay, so if we could have Representatives of BOE come on up to the front table, please. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Councilmember Rahman, go right ahead.
So, uh, I thank you so much for being here today, and I appreciate you, uh, being willing to answer a couple of questions. I know this, uh, had a deadline, and so it was waived from committee. Um, I'm curious about one part of this. The summary of this, uh, related to betterments and who pays for betterments, uh, reads that the city agrees that changes to city standards after the establishment of the project definition will be considered a betterment, with the city being responsible for the costs of this. And so I just wanted to understand that a little bit more. Can you talk a little bit more about what a betterment is, what type of project or improvement would it apply to? Uh, and why would the city be liable to pay in full if it's an improvement agreed upon by both parties?
Uh, good afternoon, first, Jose Fuentes, Deputy City Engineer, Bureau of Engineering. So, betterments are defined in the MCA as an upgrade, change, addition to the city facility that is requested by the city, and that would provide either capacity, durability, appearance, or functionality over that which was there before the project, uh, the metro project. So, um, we also define it in the MCA as any standard requirements that are changed after the release of the metro procurement documents for their design-build contractor. So the idea behind this was to try to lock in the standards and requirements that the city would place upon a project before metro advertised the project to the design builder. In the past, we didn't have that cutoff very clearly defined, and so requirements were being imposed on the project well into the design development, sometimes up to the 85, 100%. And so for metro, that was very difficult to then try to make those changes, incorporate them into the design, and then obviously you're now talking change orders as far as the design was concerned. So there was a real desire to try to contain cost, uh, risk, uh, and the scope of the rearrangements, and so we agreed that if the city were brought on early, in the early involvement phase, we would have that opportunity to vet the proposals from metro and weigh in into what requirements would then be required for those, uh, rearrangements.
And so this would allow us still to talk about improvements, for example, to first and last mile connectivity, and still, without having necessarily that the city would have to bear the cost of all of those investments, right? If we were able to talk about it earlier in the process?
Absolutely. So anything before, that's discussed and agreed by the parties, um, and also that it's, uh, published, made readily available to metro and its contractors prior to the date of advertisement for procurement of the contract, um, would be not considered a betterment.
Okay, so essentially, this would be for any changes that are made after that process?
That's correct.
Okay, that's useful to understand. I'm also curious why it's taken 20 years to sign a new agreement?
Well, we've been working on it actively for three years, and the initial goal was to try to wrap it up all in six months.
Uh-huh.
And it's just, there is a lot of stakeholders in, uh, involved in the process, as, I don't know if you saw the report, but there was, from the city side alone, there was about 50 stakeholders that participated, from metro side, anywhere between 15, 20, maybe more.
Okay.
Uh, so there's been a lot of back and forth and a lot of negotiations. We've improved this MCA relative to the last on several fronts, and so it was, you know, it took time to sort of understand, um, the goal, the purpose, and then also reach consensus on these items. So we held workshops almost every week for two years to get to this point, so...
Between all the different stakeholders?
Yeah.
Okay. Can you talk a little bit more about the changes, the improvements that you see from the last MCA in this agreement?
Sure, so some of the improvements that we, uh, are, are looking to implement are the identification of a project liaison, uh, both from the city and metro. Metro has had one, but not dedicated per project. The idea here is that this project liaison would help facilitate discussion, uh, coordinate meetings, facilitate communication between city and metro, and then serve as a point of contact for, for metro to, you know, come to the city on a specific project. And also to help kind of resolve issues as they arise at the project level. So we didn't have that. We also, you know, this is a similar model to like a case manager, uh, in private development. We want to borrow that model to try to, again, facilitate the communication and keep a lot of the issues from festering and, and not being resolved in a timely manner. So that is one component. We've also, uh, established a, um, executive task force, which is comprised of, um, executive level managers, the project liaisons, um, that will meet quarterly to discuss the implementation of the new MCA. Uh, we will discuss lessons learned, we will talk about training. Part of the problem we saw was that a lot of the personnel from both metro and the city were not aware of the provisions in the MCA, so we weren't following it. The idea now is to get ahead of it, provide the training to our staff so that we all, you know, understand what's in it, and we try to follow it as closely as possible. So there are a lot of procedures. We got a lot more granular this time around with how we're going to, uh, communicate, treat each other, but also be very clear about the roles and responsibilities. We provide for, uh, checklist so that, um, you know, we try to standardize our review comments for projects. One of the complaints, again, was that we were not necessarily consistent with our comments as a city, and so we're trying to, um, improve on that. Um, and then the biggest thing really is just about issue resolution. So, uh, historically, when issues would come up on a project, uh, metro didn't have that point person to turn to, so a lot of times the issues would go unresolved for months. Uh, the idea now is that we will all have a finger on the project, uh, and on the issues, and we will, uh, communicate regularly and really try to force resolution of these issues. Um, and if they don't come about, there is an escalation process that we will follow to get resolution all the way to involving general managers and the CEO of metro if necessary.
Okay. And, uh, my last question is, would, the, there's a streamlining that's happening through this. Would the streamlining process limit the ability of the city to be able to negotiate with metro on any issues? Is it taking things off the table that we had discussed earlier?
I'm not sure I understand the streamlining question.
Um, basically, does any, any of the changes highlighted in this, um, change our capacity to be able to negotiate for changes or improvements?
No, if anything, um, we're going to have a forum now where we're going to be invited to the table early in the project, where we can weigh in on the proposal for metro, give our input as far as what we see as something that's perhaps, uh, uh, constructible, uh, in, in a better way. Also alert metro as to a lot of, um, issues that may not, they may not be necessarily aware of. Um, and so really, this whole idea of early involvement, uh, helps both parties better understand what is proposed by metro, and then what the city will need to do in order to ensure that city standards, policies are followed early on, and not have these disputes arise at, you know, towards the end of the project.
And how will elected officials or elected offices be included in this process of early discussion?
So one of the things we purposely put into the language was that metro would reach out to the affected council districts and invite them to these early invol, involvement workshops, where we will be discussing impacts to the community, street closures, and anything else that is of concern to the council.
One thing I wanted to flag as we move forward in this process is that a lot of the metro projects are on the borders of council districts, and so I wanted to make sure that even if, uh, the improvement itself was primarily in one district, if it was close to another district, or if there were impacts expected to be felt in other districts, that they also be at least, um, in, included in some phase of the discussions, because I think that would be very helpful.
Absolutely. Absolutely, I think we will, um, be cognizant of that and, and make sure that we invite, um, those district offices that are in proximity.
Thank you. That's all my questions, thanks.
Thank you very much for those questions, Councilmember Rahman. And if I could just add one point to your question about why did it take 20 years? It obviously hasn't taken 20 years, but the fact that the old agreement is 20 years old points up the importance and the urgency of this, because of course, the transportation world in Southern California has changed, uh, completely since then. We have Measure R and Measure M projects, which make this the, the center of the largest investment in public infrastructure in America right now, because of our transportation projects that metro is embarking upon. Measure M alone, uh, expected to create a half million construction jobs over the course of these investments. A half a million jobs. Um, and so that's all the more reason why it's important to move forward with this agreement that we, staff's been working on for three years now, to ensure that we expedite those projects, we don't escalate costs, we ensure that things are delivered on time and on budget to the greatest extent possible, and we deliver those jobs. Um, so, Councilmember Padilla.
Well, I just want to be, by, by thanking, uh, Councilmember Rahman for asking a lot of great questions. A lot of them are similar to what I had, so reduces mine down. So my first question, um, and we'll leave it at this, is, do you know what, uh, departments and all partners are doing in order to ensure that city standards are forward-thinking around increasing transit ridership, service delivery, and making sure that we incorporate amenities like seating, lighting, shade, green space, and water fountains into your developments?
So I, I do have, uh, colleagues from other departments, DOT, street lighting, street services, sanitation, unfortunately, could not be here. Um, the idea here is that any ordinance policies that are adopted by the city and make their way into our published, um, information, that those would be part of the metro projects. So metro will regularly be looking at our websites and any published information that they need to consider. This is also an opportunity for us during the early involvement to raise awareness of any new policies that may be coming our way, so that metro can consider those.
Okay, so make sure I'm hearing you correctly. So we, if we want to see those, we need to tell you about them. It's not that it's embedded already in the planning and, and in the prioritization to incorporate such amenities?
Well, there, there are some. We do consider Mobility Plan 2035, we consider Green Street Elements, we do consider some of these that are already part of the, uh, the way we do business, and so, uh, those are part of that set of standards that metro needs to look into when developing a project.
Okay, and they're standards that are done, are in place, uh, under the goal of increasing ridership?
I, I'm not sure about that. DOT, if, uh, maybe they can re, help me respond.
Hi, good afternoon, Laura Rubio Conejo, General Manager of LA DOT. Councilmember, I think part of the conversations and the early involvement opportunities is to be able to proactively address exactly those issues that you've raised, um, accessibility, safety, equity, and making sure that the lines are being designed in such a way as so, to be responsive and inclusive of all of those elements.
Okay, no further questions, just want to make sure that, you know, we take into account what sort of, um, things are going to be along some of these corridors, the grocery stores, the shopping centers, the housing, and that we see this as, see these, uh, infrastructure projects, these rider, these, uh, transportation projects as things that, you know, are going to be right in front of businesses, right in front of housing, and people need to be proud and willing to utilize it. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you so much for joining us today. My question is, does this MCA distinguish between projects that were generated from unsolicited proposals or not? And if so, where does it state that? I just have a lot of concerns about unsolicited proposals, um, especially when, you know, they're oftentimes solicited to enrich one group of people, uh, on the backs of others for some cases, so can you please tell us about that? Thank you.
So good afternoon, Councilman Hernandez. I'm Tim Lindholm, and I'm the Deputy Chief Program Management Officer for LA Metro, and I'm glad to be here to support my partners, um, in this presentation. Um, the Master Cooperative Agreement is exactly what it says. It's, it's, uh, for two agencies to cooperate together when metro is building a transportation project within the public right-of-way of the city of Los Angeles, right? So that's exactly what it is. It wouldn't be applicable if there were someone else, um, delivering the project, it wouldn't be applicable if a third party was delivering the project. So although it doesn't specifically state anything in the MCA about the unsolicited process, if something were to come out of the unsolicited process, there would be a third-party-type arrangement, it would absolutely not be part of the Master Cooperative Agreement.
Great, thank you. Are there any other examples in the past of that not being the case, like, uh, a project that was unsolicited that would fall under this? Or example for that?
Well, interestingly, you know, uh, Sepulveda Transit Corridor, as an example, came through the unsolicited proposal process. That would be an example of a project that certainly would be applicable to, uh, to the Master Cooperative Agreement, but that's metro building it within, so it's, it's different. Um, I also kind of wanted to point out that there is a mechanism within the Master Cooperative Agreement, if a project were to come up that perhaps isn't a typical transportation project, or that the parties want to have a discussion about the applicability of the MCA, then we both have the opportunity to request an opt-out of the MCA for that particular project, and if we agree, then, then we won't use the MCA. And if we agree, then, then we won't use the MCA for that project, run it through the counter or something. Or if we disagree, then we could escalate it and resolve it. So there's a process for doing exactly what you're talking about.
Great, thank you. And would that ever come back to the council if it would impact within our regions? Or would that, like, that process you just talked about occur outside of these chambers?
That would occur at staff level, the way the Master Cooperative Agreement is written today.
Okay. And if those, like, for example, that adjustment or that exception were to be made, it would still be with staff? It wouldn't be brought back to us?
By my read of the Master Cooperative Agreement, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you for that clarity. Thank you, Council President.
All right. Thank you all very much. Any other questions or comments on this item? Very good. Seeing none, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you very much. So, members, just for purposes of planning the rest of the day, we do still have a special meeting which is agendized to begin at 1:30. We can't begin that before 1:30. So what we're gonna do is, as a courtesy to those who are here to, who want to offer general public comment, we're gonna take general public comment now. Then we're gonna go to our closed session. And then we'll conclude this meeting and you'll hopefully have a little bit of a break in between meetings, which we will resume again at 1:30. So with that, we'll go next to general public comment. Those who wish to offer general public comment, please make your way to the left-hand side of the chambers and line up. So I know that, I don't see Candido, but I know he signed up, Mr. Sacks, Spindler, Shaniqua. If you wish to offer general public comment, come to the left-hand side of the chambers. Even if I didn't call your name, go ahead and, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Carabonger, please come on up. Whoever I, whoever wishes to come to speak, make your way to the left-hand side of the chambers, please. All right, let's go ahead and bring up our first speaker, please. Good afternoon.
Hi, I'm Brian Kowalczuk. I'm a handicapped senior. And I'm calling to, I'm here, I was here last week about the loophole in the ULA E-RAP program that if a tenant gets approved for the emergency, that they can still get evicted by the landlord. And my landlord got a final notice on Wednesday. She has three business days to respond. If she doesn't respond by the end of business Monday, my application is gonna get deleted from the program. And I could get evicted. I'd like to hear from Madeline from your office said she was gonna talk to the Housing Department. I'd like to hear from her. Maybe Jeff Kemp could ask the Housing Department to, to put a hold on my application so it doesn't get deleted if my landlord doesn't respond. And finally, you know, it seems to me that Mayor Bass would, I hope you guys could pass that emergency resolution, because as it stands right now, homelessness is gonna increase with the current status of the ULA E-RAP program.
Thank you very much, sir. And thank you for bringing that issue to our attention. I know that my staff has been working with you, but I'm gonna ask my deputy chief of staff to come up and talk to you right now.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Good afternoon.
Buenos dias. Necesito traducción, por favor. Mi nombre es Sofía Mendoza. Soy miembro de ACE y vivo en el Distrito Nueve.
Hello, my name is Sofía Mendoza. I'm a member of ACE and I live in District Nine.
Sí, estoy aquí porque quiero pedirles al ayuntamiento que...
I'm here because I want to ask the City Hall
que apoye el cambio a la ley Tajo.
I want them to support the Tajo Act.
Todos ustedes ya saben
All of you, you know?
de este nuevo cambio.
About this new change?
Es importante
It's important?
para el año 2024
For the year 2024?
que la agenda
That the agenda?
es, aparezca la ley ta, perdón, este cambio.
That this change?
Necesitamos su apoyo.
We need your support?
para darle para detener el acoso, sí? Ya que yo soy una inquilina.
We need your help to stop the harassment because I'm a renter.
Estoy siendo fuertemente acosada.
That I've been harassed.
Por eso es importante y les pido.
This is why this is important and I'm asking you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I wish to make one statement in regard to young Jewish white boys. Young Jewish white boys are violating the civil rights of young Jewish white girls.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, everybody. My name is Maria. I am a fellow Angelino and a UCLA graduate from the Chicano-Chicana-Chicanex Department. I am a mother of two. And I am here today to fulfill my civic duty and my obligations as a human, human being with compassion. I just want to let the city council know today and remind everybody that advocating for the rights and dignity of Palestinians is not hate speech. Criticizing a foreign government's policy is not hate speech. Calling for a ceasefire when over 18,000 Palestinians have been killed, majority of whom are women and children, is not hate speech. That is freedom of speech. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I say a little more?
I'm afraid not.
If you don't mind?
No, we have a line of people waiting. Next speaker, please.
Buenas, buenas tardes.
Good afternoon.
Mi nombre es Dominga Sol Orzano.
My name is Dominga Sol Orzano.
Y soy miembro de ACE.
And I'm an ACE member.
Del Distrito Nueve.
From District Nine.
Estoy aquí para pedirle al ayuntamiento que apoye, por favor, el cambio a la ley Tajo.
I'm here to ask the City Hall to please, um, support the change to the Tajo law.
Todos ustedes ya, ya saben de este nuevo cambio.
You are all familiar with this new change?
Y es importante para nosotros que en el año que entra la ley Tajo aparezca en la agenda.
And it is important for us that next year, this Tajo Act appears on the agenda.
Por favor, necesitamos su apoyo para detener el acoso con, con los inquilinos.
Please, we are asking for your help to stop the harassment with the renters.
Por favor, le, les pido, por favor, yo como soy una familia de bajos recursos, por favor, yo estoy, tengo mucho, mucha preocupación con, por mi familia.
I'm asking you for the, please to help us because I'm a family of a low-income family and I am very worried about my family.
Y como veo mucho a mirededor, en mi vecindario muchas personas desalojadas, entonces yo me preocupo mucho por mi familia, por favor, se les pide.
And because I see so many people around me in my neighborhood that are being evicted, I'm afraid that we will be evicted and I worry about my family. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Barbara Broidy for Coalition for Beautiful Los Angeles. I'd like to thank the four councilwomen who voted no on the Metro TCN project today. Not because they may like or dislike digital billboards or the TCN program, but because they were acting in the best interest of the city, responsibly acting to prevent injuries and deaths on our streets and, and to pass an ordinance that is not ready yet to be considered. There is language that is inconsistent, math that doesn't add up, and there's no language in the ordinance to protect the city's long-term interests, public health, safety, welfare. And you have a fiduciary responsibility to serve the city's long-term best financial interests. This doesn't do it. We had emergency physicians referring to this program with its kill boards, not billboards. It's time to reconsider. The pressure to press this motion today was extraordinary, and it should be reconsidered and be the best it can be. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
On, on item 29, did you guys, I, I walked out of the room.
We can't have it, we can't have it back and forth. You can come to the side and talk to someone on the channel. We cannot engage back and forth. Someone else, you can bring it up, the staff will meet you, and you can ask whatever questions you want.
Good afternoon. My name is Maria Brones and I'm a member of ACE. My reason for being here is because I need and we want the support of each and every one of you councilmembers for the language on Tajo. We already have enough harassment from landlords and from new developers. I think it's about to time that this stops. We have a lot of people on the street and it's not fair, just because the developers want more money. So please, help us introduce this new law with enforcement from you. I am on the street because of that. So help us also the senior citizens to be, stay, stable in a place where we can die in peace and with quietness. That's all I ask. The reinforcement for the Tajo law, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Mike Greenspan. I'm sorry I missed the earlier part of the meeting. I had to go to court today. Well, not me, but it was for Current Price. And his trial's been moved to January 8th, 1:30, 13th floor, Department 119. You know, as the Baptists always say, spread the word, and I'm spreading the word about him. And one of your former colleagues, Mr. Weezer, his sentencing got moved to January 26th over there at the Federal Building. That'll be nice. He'll be in prison. And I made up a word a while back, years ago, he'll be bitch-licious because he's gonna be that prison bitch when all them Willys put their Wonkas in his bitchy chocolate factory. I mean, he's gonna be such a prison bitch, even though he went to Selesian and isn't Jewish, he will be bat-miss-qualified because he'll have had all that dick in him. He will be a bitch. Bitch-licious. It'll be so wonderful to see Weezer going to prison.
All right. Next speaker.
Yes, and the LA City Council is a certifiable criminal enterprise. So January the 9th, 2024, at 1:30 a.m., join me and Current Price as he gets fucked in the ass. He's gonna file a demur in a criminal case? Nobody's won that in 100 years, except for me, when you fucked me on my false fucking gun charge case, right? You know, these people think they can do what I do. No. And then, Mr. Weezer is gonna spend his last Christmas and his last New Year's with his estranged wife because his sentencing was moved to January 26th, 2024, at LA, at 8 a.m. Let's thank the FBI for allowing him to spend his last Christmas. That's very good. Thank you. Thank you so much. And of course, he's gonna rat everybody out in this fucking building. He's gonna rat out his mother, well, excuse me, his mother already ratted him out. And Current Price, happy birthday, Nick!
Thank you very much. Next.
Real quickly, if there's anyone available from Council District Two, I have an issue in District Two. I'd like to discuss after my comment. If a staffer could come chat with me. More than 18,700 Palestinians have been murdered in Gaza this year. Seventy percent of the death tolls women and children. Yet this council panders to Zionist fears. You pretend that you care about antisemitism so you can justify curbing free speech by criminalizing disseminating flyers that include Israeli governments' critiques. You don't give a fuck. You're all corrupt and Zionist.
All right, thank you. A little, little flat on the last stand-up, but all right. Next.
Hi, I'm Edna Monroy with Sage and keep LA House Coalition. Three main things. One, I really wanna urge you all to please move general public comment to the beginning of the meeting like we had it before. A lot of tenants took time from their busy days to come and give their comments, but unfortunately they couldn't stay five hours, right? This happened on Tuesday, so I wanna uplift that. The second thing is, I, I wanna thank all the councilmembers that already met with us to discuss a very important matter of the Tenant Anti-Harassment Ordinance 2.0. We've had very, very good meetings, and we really look forward to your championship of Tajo when it's introduced in January. We wanna keep Angelinos protected from eviction, harassment, and intimidation from the landlords, and we wanna end homelessness. And one of the ways to end homelessness is by passing and implementing a strong Tenant Anti-Harassment Ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Arnold Sacks. So quickly addressing that Metro bullshit. I'm wondering if they have an attorney. Flees them, screw them, and fuck them. That'd be a great attorney for Metro. It's the devil in the detail. You have a Metropolitan Transportation Association, and you have a Metropolitan Transportation Corporation, and you have Metro by T-Mobile, and you have Metro by Metro. You have a lot of investments with Metro. It's a problem. Twenty-year project? You still haven't finished the project to the LA, Lawa? Is it Lawa, LAX, or Los Angeles World Interport, International Airports? And what happened to Ontario Airport? This new normal being the old normal. This footprint or a fingerprint? The location of the new headquarters located on Zero, Zero Vision Parkway, adjacent to Zero Vision Planning.
Okay, next speaker, please.
Ian Jamison, general public comment. This is not China and this is not Saudi Arabia. This is the United States of America. And in the United States of America, we operate via the rule of law. And the law states, per Los Angeles City Council Rule 7, general public comment is to be taken at or near the beginning of the meeting. If you don't like that, then you can change the law. But until you do, you are obligated to comply with the law. You are not above the law, Mr. Krikorian. And Mr. Krikorian, just from the bottom of my heart, I would deeply appreciate if you could descend into whatever circle of hell you arose from. End the fucking mandates. You're all unbelievably contemptuous of the rule of law.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Maria. I'm here for general, uh, public comment. My name is Maria Cabellán. I'm living, I'm living District Eight since June 2023. I have been living with the landlord that's pocketing utilities and not collecting rent. Along with harassment to me and my son, to make us living in a roach infested. I have called the Health Department on November 2023. The landlord Pablo Arala had complied, but still, same condition. That's the, that's the harassment has been gotten worse. I, I enlarge council. Now I urge Councilmember Dawson to support strengthening, strengthening, strengthening the Tenant Harassment Ordinance.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next speaker, please. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Uh, my name is Hassan.
My name is Hassan, and I would like to speak on item public comment, sorry, because 29 is already voted, which I'm happy to hear that, that we're fixing gentrification as in South LA with the ordinance like CPIO, who recently we heard that the city attorney is not doing their job enough. But I appreciate my council member, McCrease, that is getting things done. On Tahoe, as you just heard, one of the constituents that she's organizing now in her building to educate her tenants that what harassment is doing is actually creating also the displacement of our communities in South LA. And it's going to continue until we have some ordinance that are actually going to help those tenants and educate landlords with citations because I don't think they're going to learn otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hola, intérprete?
Sí, señor.
Sí, mi nombre es Ángel. Quiero hablar sobre la implementación a Tahoe.
My name is Ángel, and I want to talk about implementing Tahoe.
Quisiera que aprueben la implementación a Tahoe 2.0.
I would like you to support and approve Tahoe 2.0.
Para que se apliquen las sanciones a los propietarios que están acosando y hostigando.
So it could be applied to the landlords and the owners that are harassing.
Yo soy un inquilino que está siendo acosado extremadamente por su propietario y que no le están poniendo ninguna sanción ni lo están poniendo un alto.
I am a renter that is being harassed by the landlord or the owner, and they're not putting a stop to him.
Por favor, aprueben esa implementación a Tahoe 2.0.
Please approve Tahoe 2.0.
Para que las sanciones a estos propietarios abusivos se tomen en acción.
So these penalties to these abusive landlords are in action.
Que los, que los, que los abogados sean pagados por el mismo propietario.
And the owner and the attorney should be paid by the landlord.
De esa manera, los propietarios se van a detener en su acoso y hostigamiento.
This way, the landlords are going to stop harassing us.
Por favor, aprueben la implementación a Tahoe 2.0.
Please approve Tahoe 2.0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Council President and honorable council members. My name is Jackie Romero, and I'm here on behalf of the L.A. Chapter of the California Restaurant Association. I just wanted to thank all of the council offices and the city attorney's office for getting this item on the agenda for alfresco. Our restaurants have really been looking forward to getting sure that we pass this item before the end of the year, so we're thankful that you got that on the agenda and look forward to having you all vote on this to get this approved today so we can make sure that our restaurants can keep alfresco going. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that, oh, final speaker for here in the council chambers?
Of course, the one you always ignore on a regular basis. That's me. All of a sudden, somehow, you know, you guys moved the general public comment to the very end. And then based on my knowledge about the Brown Act, that the member of the public should not be worried about the retaliation from the government just simply by criticizing the government. And then right now, I feel like you intentionally did this. It's because you know many of us have to go to school very soon, or maybe many of us have to go back to work very soon. It's because I feel you have a strong intention. You do not want to hear any of those criticisms from the public. That's why you have to wait us, you made us to wait intentionally to the very end because you know most of us do not have time to wait for you. So I feel that's a very disgusting political attack on the freedom of speech and on the criticize, the rights to criticize the government. That's disgusting, despicable!
Thank you. Okay, we'll go next to the general public comment speakers on the phone. If you wish to speak on general public comment, now is the time to raise your hand.
First caller, please proceed.
General public comment.
Go ahead.
Yeah, speaking on, just piggybacking on what he said. Mr. Kocorian, you made this a dictatorship. You've broken rules and you changed everything, pointing Ms. Hut, everything on your dictatorship. Now, I get it, you're turned out this year. That's all right. But the coordinate of the person that's going to precede you is the idea that they didn't say nothing during the time they should have spoken up? Never. Once they want to run for your position, they will. About 26 different entities working together. You have a 54-inch line going down Arlita northbound in the San Fernando Valley, Pacoima, San Fernando, Arlita, and it's becoming a situation you're getting a stop rail through there. If they don't work together with water and power, it's going to be, and it serves no one in Pacoima or Arlita, just people from the Anamlo Valley coming in from Lancaster, Aguadulce. That serves nothing in that community.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Next caller, please.
Next caller, please proceed. Caller with the last four digits 5554, please press star six to unmute.
Hello.
Hi, Sean. Go ahead, Sean.
Uh, yeah, like to wish you a happy holidays. I heard that Jose Weezer is going to go to jail just January 26th. I hope the council gets better by the new, I hope the council gets better. Like to think about a few things. We should move the agenda on beginning of the meeting because people are going to have to go to work and stuff, just something to think about. Happy holidays.
Thank you, Sean. Same to you. Next caller, please.
Next caller, please proceed. Caller with the last four digits 9519, please press star six to unmute.
Yes, this is Jason on Focus Canaveral.
Yes, go ahead. You have one minute for general public comment.
Absolutely. Thank you, there, pumpkinhead. Well, tonight, Focus Can, he's going to be on tonight doing his thing there, just like inviting y'all in here in the council. Maybe some of y'all are in the horseshoes, y'all ain't somewhere dicking off or y'all don't figure it out. I'm glad we come doing it tonight. We're going to have a little stab and dab going on, hopefully. Hopefully, things to show up and he'll show his head, and we're going to have a good time there, you know, get the holiday season there, and always a good holiday season when you got Focus Can and a little thing going on, figure it out, and maybe we get a little something going on there. But anyway, y'all have a good.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Next caller, please proceed.
I take great umbrage with a deprecating tone in the previous items discussion when mentioning stakeholders. Those stakeholders live with your decisions. They live with your decisions. In fact, there are stakeholders who are not allowed to participate in the democratic process of voting for their own council district representative. They are living with your decisions. I hope you use your recess to reevaluate your consideration of stakeholders so they are no longer considered afterthoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Next caller, please proceed. Caller with the last four digits 1264, please press star six to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, caller, please press star six to unmute.
Yes, we can hear you, but you need to speak up just a bit, please.
Okay. Yeah, I'm calling about the digital billboards facing the freeways. We already have problems with the copper lighting being, you know, the copper being taken away from the lighting on the freeways already. We also have problems with people running across the freeway, people getting on the wrong off-ramp, driving against traffic on the freeway. We have too many problems on the freeway already. We don't need these billboards. These billboards are only going to cost more killings, more harm, so I hope that you can reconsider this vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Next caller, please proceed.
Yeah, hi, Daniel Gus for general public comment.
Go ahead.
Yes, hi. So I did my half-hour spot on 790 KABC talking about Kern Price's arraignment today. And yes, Mr. Kocorian, you're a smart man, and it was not lost on me that item 28 today was about a different person. But the point that may have been lost on you is that you have a peer who's being arraigned to spend as many as 10 years in prison, Kern Price, who should be there at work today, and you guys are further encouraging conflict of interest, which is one of the charges along with embezzlement and perjury that he's going. And a week ago, you created a new multimillion-dollar bureaucracy to help council members identify conflict of interest, but here you are doing it again. There's almost 200,000 active lawyers.
Caller, your time has expired.
Thanks very much. Next caller, please.
Next caller, please proceed. Caller with the last four digits 2988, please press star six to unmute.
Caller with the last four digits 2988, this is your last opportunity to speak. Please press star six to unmute. Okay, unfortunately, we're going to have to move on to the next caller.
Next caller, please proceed.
Okay, next caller. Next caller. Mr. Spindler, you're doing that. I consider that a disruption of the meeting. If there's any further disruption, you're gone. Next caller, please.
Next caller, please proceed.
Good afternoon. Excuse me, good afternoon, Brock Landers, Los Angeles Private Investigators. Let's denounce Hamas. Let's denounce Hamas. Shout out to the CHP Metro Air Unit. Those are real dudes up there. We should be proud to have people like that with that character above us protecting us. Thank you for taking care of my boy. Brock Landers is a law enforcement type guy who's hired by people to stop these bad individuals, you know? How do you stop a bad individual? Do you say, you know, please stop drug smuggling, please stop extorting, you know, and jewelry sales and stuff like that? And as much of a law enforcement type guy as I am, I sleep better at night knowing the CHP Metro Air Unit is prowling the skies to protect us. Go puppet, no one can do it like you. Today, KDL looking like Richard Ramirez sporting a Ted Bundy outfit? What are you taking from Jeffrey D. and John Wayne Gacy? Ms. Padilla, we want you to know your quick.
Caller, your time has expired. Thank you. Next caller, please.
Next caller, please proceed.
Yeah, thank you. It's Eric Previn from Studio City. And, you know, a couple of years ago, I set out to get people to show up at meetings and telephonically or otherwise, raise the roof and make it clear that the people of Los Angeles don't like corruption. So today is the day as we go off into the recess, let's get all items moved forthwith to expose and think about and cure and correct for the holidays. Let's realize that the trick of instituting a new rule right in the, we got about 100 items today, what do we do? Oh, God, there's a lot of people. Ram them through and change the rules and watch them all fall over. That's an ugly, ugly idea, and that was conceived of by the council president leadership. So Mr. Harris Dawson, Mr. Blumenfield, and Mr. Kocorian, it's time to go to your corners, sit quietly for 15 or 20 minutes, and then come back together and decide if you want to be sued in the bright light of day when all the folks in January are going for their arraignment.
Caller, your time has expired.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker, please proceed.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. You have one minute for general public comment.
Thank you. Good afternoon, City Council. We in this community have a mental health crisis, a housing and homeless crisis, a substance abuse crisis, and we have senior and disabled people who are receiving social security benefits that's not enough. The community is suffering, and President Biden wants to send $61 billion to Ukraine? Why don't you send a message to the White House? Tell Karen Bass to tell President Biden that the people in this community matter. The American people are suffering. We're sick and tired of it. Enough is enough. Tell them to stop sending our tax dollars outside of the United States and help the people in this country. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker, please proceed. Speaker with the last four digits 9519, please press star six to unmute.
Um, yes, this is Jason on Focus Canaveral, and I'm just here today so I don't get fined.
Yeah, didn't you already speak, sir?
I'm just here so I don't get fined, sir.
Okay. Next caller, please.
Next caller, please proceed. Caller with a name, call in user three, you are unmuted, please speak.
Hi, this is. This is.
Good caller, please turn down the volume on whatever other device you're listening to this meeting on.
I'm sorry, this is Wayne Chang with my new friend Candido. I wish to thank you to let me do public comment.
So we can hear you, but please turn down the volume on your other device. It's really difficult to hear you, and there's a lot of distortion. So please turn down the volume on your radio or television or computer.
That caller is gone. No more hand raised.
Okay, very good. That will close general public comment then. So we're prepared to go into a closed session now.
And Mr. President, just for the record, I believe we exhausted all public comment on the phones as well as in-person on general and the phones for the items as well.
Yes, we did. All right. So members of the audience, you'll need to leave the room, please, expeditiously. Mr. Spindler, you need to get up and go. Mr. Spindler, get up and go. We're ready to go into closed session.
Las Posadas is a free nightly holiday tradition for nine nights before Christmas hosted by El Pueblo Historical Monument and Olvera Street Merchants. Traveling carolers representing Mary and Joseph sing the song "Searching for an Inn", while the innkeeper's singing response turns them away. This recreation of the journey of Mary and Joseph to Bethlehem is celebrated with traditional songs, colorful costumes, and fiber music. Everyone is welcome to participate in this free, family-friendly event. The festivities begin at 6:30 p.m. each night from December 16th through the 24th and include a children's pinata and the candlelit procession at the Avila Adobe at 7:15 p.m. For more information, visit elpueblo.lacity.gov/events. Get involved in a Christmas community cleanup. Councilmember Eunice Hernandez, the Pico Union Neighborhood Council, Creetaown Youth and Community Center, and the City of L.A.'s Office of Community Beautification invite you to join them in a cleanup of the Pico Union Neighborhood for the holiday season. Join other volunteers, meet neighbors, and make friends in this mid-city community activity taking place on Saturday, December 16th, from 8:00 a.m. at 1420 South Arapaho Street. The cleanup event is free, open to all ages, and volunteers get snacks and drinks. For more details, visit the Office of Community Beautification website at laocb.org/events. Nothing says holidays quite like gingerbread. The Lincoln Heights Branch of Los Angeles Public Library invites you to their winter celebrations, including this tasty event, Building a Winter Gingerbread House. Join the library for this arts and crafts project where they will be making gingerbread houses. All the construction ingredients are provided, along with snacks while supplies last. All ages are welcome to this free, in-person, and hands-on event at the Lincoln Heights Branch Library on Workman Street, Saturday, December 16th at 2:00 p.m. For ADA accommodations, please call the library 72 hours ahead of the event. For more details, visit lapl.org/events. And that's a look at some things to do. And that's a look at some things to do.
The City of L.A.'s Department of Aging reminds you that getting vaccinated and boosted is the best way to protect yourself and your community.
And it's especially important for those at higher risk of severe diseases such as older adults and individuals who are immunocompromised or have chronic conditions.
For COVID-19 vaccination appointments or to request in-home vaccination if you or a loved one have difficulty leaving the home, please call 211 or the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health Vaccine Call Center at 833-540-0473, open daily, 8 a.m. to 8:30 p.m.
Remember, vaccines are free and immigration status and insurance are not required.
Visit vaccinatelecity.com for more information about how to get vaccinated.
And visit aging.lacity.org or call 213-482-7252 for information on senior services.
Let's take a look at how we can view and understand the Bureau of Street Services' bi-weekly sweeping schedule. From your internet browser, you'll want to go to streetsla.lacity.org/sweeping. From this page, you'll have a few options. You can sign up for street sweeping notifications. You can view and download the bi-weekly scheduled calendar. And last but not least, if you click on Use the Map, you can view an interactive sweeping map for the city. From this page, you'll also still have the option to sign up for street sweeping notifications. On the left side of the page, you can input a city address to view the street sweeping schedule for that area. When you begin typing in an address, you'll notice the system will try to predict your location via a drop-down box. You can verify and select the correct location that you're trying to input by selecting the address with the correct zip code. Once this is done, a pin will drop on the designated address, and then you can view an interactive sweeping route by clicking on the highlighted areas for the streets. You can also view bi-weekly routes on the left side via a list breakdown. I'm going to use the interactive map, and I'll click this location, and it will show that there's a Friday sweeping route between 10 a.m. and 12 noon on the second and fourth Friday of the month, as well as a Thursday sweeping route between 10 a.m. and 12 noon on the second and fourth Thursday of the month. If I like to view this and understand it using the calendar, I can go back to the main sweeping page and view the calendar. This calendar is color-coded to help you understand when sweeping takes place. Blue is for the first and third sweep days. Green is for the second and fourth sweep days. Gold is for non-posted routes to street sweeping, and dark gray is city holidays when sweeping does not occur. Looking in February, we want to locate the green since we had second and fourth sweep days. The second and fourth Thursday and Friday of the month in February was Thursday, February 9th, Friday, February 10th, Thursday, February 23rd, and Friday, February 24th. Parking enforcement will not ticket on days where street sweeping does not occur in your area. I hope you found this video useful, as it should further help you understand street services' bi-weekly sweeping schedule.
The Department of Cultural Affairs, DCA, has opened the 2023-2024 funding cycle for the Public Space Activation Fund, PAF. PAF supports a wide range of creative projects in Los Angeles city neighborhoods where their arts are absent or scarce. Eligible applicants are L.A.-based community entrepreneurs such as independent artists, cultural artists, nonprofit organizations, and neighborhood business managers. Funding levels and eligible requests range from $600 to $45,000 based on the category and complexity of proposed projects. PAF performs... 24, and applications are typically reviewed within 20 business days. For eligibility requirements and application instructions, please go to culturela.org/grants/paf. A City of Los Angeles sanitation worker was honored by the Board of Public Works for his public service career, now in its 50th year. David Cook began working for the City of Los Angeles in 1973 when he applied for a job with the Department of Recreation and Parks. Later, Cook moved to L.A. City's Sanitation Department, where he is employed in the Clean Water Conveyance Division as a wastewater collection worker. Cook's interests include car racing and fishing. He's a fan of country music and is well-known on the job for his cowboy-style safety helmet. Cook has no plans to retire. For more information on City of Los Angeles Board of Public Works, go to dpw.lacity.gov. L.A.'s Harbor Commission has approved its first community investment grant, which will offer funds of around $1.3 million to 65 local organizations. Two maritime educational programs get the first community grant, EXP.
Doors open in the back? Okay, very good. The council is now back in open session. Mr. City Attorney, is there anything that needs to be reported out of closed session?
Nothing to report, Mr. President.
Very good. Madam Clerk, what's now before us?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Without objection, posted and referred. Next.
The desk is clear, sir.
All right. Members, mindful of the fact that we're about to start a special meeting at 1:30, does anybody wish to make any announcements now or motions to adjourn now? Or, okay, so, because we can do those things at the end of the special meeting as well. So, seeing none, the regular meeting is now adjourned, and we have one minute until we can begin the special meeting, it looks like.
Yes, one more minute, sir. It's 1:29.
Okay. The hour is now 1:30, so we are ready to begin our special meeting. Madam Clerk, if you could, please call the roll.
Blumenfield, DeLeon, Harris Dawson, Hernandez, Hutt, Krikorian, Lee, McCosker, Padilla, Park, Price, Ramon, Rodriguez, Soto Martinez, Jaroslavski, 14 members present in court, Mr. President. Mr. President, would council like all items in the special meeting agenda to go forth with, sir?
Without objection, that will be the order.
Items 1 through 34, I'm sorry, items 34 through 43 are items which public hearings have not been held. For the record, the description on item 38, motion Padilla, Ramon, is relative to grant funding to support technical studies on the de-channelization and widening of the Los Angeles River and to administer project implementation for the Sepulveda Basin Vision Plan. 10 votes are required for consideration, sir.
Okay, so, members, without objection, those items are now before us. Do members wish to call anything special? Councilmember McCosker.
Item 39, I've been advised to make my statement again. I can do that now or later.
Why don't you go right ahead now?
Thank you very much. So item 39 is an ordinance, and it's based on a motion presented by Rodriguez, Park, and McCosker, seconded by Ramon, where we had a set of exemptions for the following categories of business or characteristics of business on the outdoor dining. One, that the primary restaurant contains 3,000 feet of indoor floor area or less, or, the important word, the outdoor dining area is 1,000 square feet or less, or the provisions of the outdoor parking spaces are otherwise prohibited or excused by state law. The language in the ordinance does not have the first "or." It has the floor area interior or less, and then moves immediately, without any conjunction, to the outdoor dining area of 1,000 square feet or less, and then has an "or" for the provisions of state law. And for clarity, the city attorney is telling us, and the planning department is telling us, that in fact, those three items are conjunctive, or no, are disjunctive and not conjunctive. They're reading the "or" into the language, and I'm just clarifying that that is the case as interpreted by the planning department and the city attorney's office, and making sure that for public comment, people understand that, and that will be the effect of the law.
And Mr. President and Councilmember McCosker, just for the record, that is the case for the city attorney's office.
Thank you.
And that seems to me a very reasonable interpretation of that language, which is likely consistent with what the intention of this city council was for purposes of the legislative records. So, any other specials members in the special meeting? All right. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, what can we now vote on? Oh, right, I'm sorry. So all of those are items that are eligible for public comment, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So anybody wishing to offer public comment on any of the special agenda items? If you could, please make your way to the left-hand side of the council chambers, on your left, and the sergeant will direct you up to the podium.
So for members of the public, that would be items 34 through 43. Again, only the items that are on the special meeting agenda. There is no general public comment for the special meeting agenda. So, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Which items would you like to speak to?
Item 39 on the special agenda, please.
Okay, so you have one minute for item 39.
Good afternoon, Council President, honorable council members. This is a great day for the restaurants here in the City of L.A. The alfresco ordinance that is before you to approve, we're here to urge you to support that going forward. We have worked, the CRA, let me start Jackie with CRA. CRA has worked collectively and collaborative with city planning departments, with the council offices, and also with the mayor's office to make sure that we get this program into permanency today. And so we order to support that and look forward to not only getting this through, but also addressing our restaurants in the coastal zone. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else wishing to offer comment on our agenda items on the special agenda? Seeing none here in the John F. Raro Council chambers, let's go to the callers who are on the phone to offer comment on the special agenda items only.
So, members of the public, if you're on the phones or if you're calling in to speak to the items that would be 34 through 43 on the special agenda, please press star nine to raise your hand or request to speak now.
First caller, what items would you like to speak on?
Go ahead, caller.
Caller, your phone number is hidden, but please press star six to mute yourself now.
All right, caller, next caller?
Next caller, what items would you like to speak on? Speak with the last four digits 5923, please press star six to mute yourself now.
Caller with the last four digits 5923... Caller with the last four digits, 5923, this is your last opportunity to speak. Please press *6 now, or we're going to have to move on to the next caller. Next caller?
Next caller, please say which items you would like to speak on.
All general items and public comments.
So, you have three minutes for the items. Again, that's items 34 through 43. Please begin.
Yes, thank you, pumpkin brain. So, what do we have here? Hurry up, human. Try. Number 35. The consideration of the bilingual bonus. Yes, which languages are they, Tracy Park? Are they Korean? Spanish? Chinese? Well, I should get a bonus too, because I speak all of them, and John Lee knows it. As I've demonstrated my proficiency. Now, we have 36, a professional service agreement with the government job. Fuck item 36. Then we get to more corruption. Item 37, transformative climate committees. What does it mean? Exactly, it's complete nonsense. Bullshit about the boss, oh my God! Page nine of the agenda, authorize the boss to accept grant funds? That's Jose Wezar's FBI name, the boss! You mean, you're putting Jose Wezar in charge of this item? Holy shit! Everybody call the FBI and the Department of Justice, who's across the street at the Deaton Theater right now handing out awards. Item 38, CD 6? That's Padilla! Shame on Amelda on item 38. $2,175. And the $425,000 to support community outreach? Does that mean Amelda's going to clean up Burbank Boulevard and turn on the streetlights from the 405 to Woodley? If she does, then I won't talk about her weight in 2024! Item 39, the city attorney? We don't want anything to do with them! Oh, Alfresco Dining? I'm here right now! I'm here at the City Hall area where homeless criminals have deprecated and urinated, and I'm going to sit here and have Alfresco lunch? What if I drop my sandwich and accidentally eat some shit leftover by a homeless criminal? And what am I going to do? Wait to sue the city? That's right! So, on behalf of Tracy Park, we want this item referred back to committee. And then CD 3, Lee, Bob, and Bleed wants an ice rink? Fuck ice rinks! Who the fuck is going to go to Reseda with a pair of ice skates? You'll get it stolen by the homeless! Fuck Bob, Bleed, and Bleed!
Time has expired, next caller? Next caller, please.
There are no more speakers on the virtual queue.
All right, that will close public comment on all agenda items on the special agenda. So, Madam Clerk, what is now before us to vote on?
Mr. President, council may now vote on items 34 through 43, sir.
Do any members wish to be heard on any of those items? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
14 eyes.
Very good, thank you. What is now before us, Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, would you like to adjourn the special and go back to adjourning motions and announcements, sir?
Well, if there's no, first of all, we're not, we've already concluded the regular meeting, so we're going to just go ahead and wrap this up. So, for the items that are before us, is there any other action item before the council?
No, sir, and it was announced that these, all these items will go forthwith, sir.
Yes, without objection, that will be the order. So, that will take us next to announcements. So, members, are there any announcements that you would like to make? Councilmember Padilla for an announcement, followed by Councilmember McCosker.
That doesn't work, okay. Nothing in particular. This is our last council for the calendar year, so I just wanted to wish everybody a happy holiday season, and thank you all for being so welcoming in my first four months. So, thank you, and I hope everybody gets some rest, and see you in the Happy New Year. So, New Years is my favorite holiday, so, Happy New Year, everyone, eventually.
Here, here, thank you. Councilmember Hernandez, followed by Councilmember DeLeon?
Thank you so much, Council President. So, we, several of us hit our one-year anniversary, and I didn't, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't know I was going to say anything, but I felt that I have a responsibility to say something right now, because, you know, it was a very intense first year. It's like a roller coaster, a lot of ups and downs, a lot of learning lessons. But there was also a lot of camaraderie, like, a lot of us, you know, we think about things in different ways and have different perspectives, but we've been able to come together in some of the most critical moments of our city. So, I just want to give everybody a deep gratitude for your patience with me, but also in helping and supporting our team, and being very collaborative, and for your leadership, Council President, for allowing democracy to play out. I just really enjoy that process, and I think it's a duty that we have to our constituents to show that process, and so you've allowed that to happen. So, just thank you to all of you, really appreciate y'all, and look forward to continuing to do this work with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember DeLeon? Followed by Councilmember McCosker. And I'm sorry, members, if you pushed your buttons before, for some reason, the names came off the queue, so if you could please push your button again. Mr. DeLeon?
Thank you very much, Council President Krikorian. I want to wish everyone a happy holidays, whether it's Happy Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, Feliz Navidad, Merry Christmas. I hope you all are safe with your family, friends, and loved ones. Also, we have an announcement, which is, during the holiday season, believe it or not, especially for working families, immigrant families, these are very tough times with regards to profound food insecurity, as well as much added costs with the pressures of buying gifts for children, especially in black and brown neighborhoods. And that's why I want to make this announcement, that for the next three weeks, where childcare will be nearly impossible for working families, we are offering in CD 14 camps for three weeks. And at the following locations, we will be having camp, which will start on Monday, which I believe is the 18th, December 18th. It will last for three weeks, and it will be at El Sereno Recreation Center, Lincoln Park Recreation Center, Highland Park Recreation Center, Rose Hills, Bull Heights, Lou Costello, Evergreen, Ramona Garcia, Hazard, Hollenbeck, Pecan, or they say Pecan, State Street, as well as Wabash. The last four obviously being in Bull Heights, and Hazard being in Ramona Gardens. For the next three weeks, when working families have to just do that, they have to work, there's no school, and there's no childcare. So, that's why a lot of youth are at risk during the holiday season. The camp will be Monday through Friday for the next three weeks, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The total cost will be, I believe, approximately about $10 or $12. We're going to buy out, we're buying out the total costs for all the families who are going to enroll, but for the, our constituents, for folks who participate, it'll be about $12, I think, ballpark right now. But just want to make that announcement, it's really critical, especially during the holiday season. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember McCosker?
Thank you very much. I too want to say happy holidays to everyone. And thank you for the words about the one year. One year's been, it's been a lot of fun, it's been really nice. It's been really, really, really an honor to serve with all of you. I do want to announce that in our Winter Wonderland Extravaganza, we have two more left in the 1-5. Tomorrow, we're going to be in Harbor City, we're going to be at the Harbor City Rec Center, again, from 4:00 to 8:00. And once again, we'll have sledding, and we're going to have Santa, tree lighting, and it's really great to activate the Harbor City Rec Center. We're actually moving it there for the first time, and that'll be lovely. And then next week, on Tuesday, we're going to be at the Cheryl Green Boys and Girls Club in the south end of the gateway. And it's the first time we're doing a Winter Wonderland in the south end of the gateway, and the Cheryl Green area is particularly just a wonderful area with a lot of young folks and who probably have not had an opportunity for any kind of snow play ever. And I just want to say that the sledding has been overwhelmingly successful. My record in contests is pretty, pretty high. I think we have a little video. I have taken on, oh, we might not have the video. We do have the video.
Probably better for you.
Yeah, this is, this is in Wilmington, and I'm in the middle. And that's David and his sister. I finished third. I did beat, in San Pedro, I did beat Gene Soroka, and I beat, and I beat, I think I beat Mike Gibson, Assembly Member Gibson, in Watts. And so, my record, I think, is like 5-1, that was the only time I lost.
Councilmember, if you completed it without injury, that's a win.
Well, I can't say I completed it without injury, there's been a lot of, there's been a lot of sore backs. But I also want to say that next, we will, we will not have been back, but next year, there's a new holiday going on the calendar, the official holiday going on the city's calendar. On January 5th, we're going to be celebrating 1-5 Day. And so, to everyone out there in the 1-5, look for the activities on 1-5 Day, and have happy holiday, everyone.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Hutt?
Oh, yeah. I want to say thank you for, I think I'm at 15 months or something like that. And it has been really exciting time to represent people that you have lived with your whole entire life, but better than that, build relationships with each one of you who feel the same way I do. Like, we love L.A., and we got to do this work. I also want to take a moment to thank all our departments for working as hard as they do to bring services. And to, and to our tech people that are in here to make sure that our voices are heard, all administrative staff to make sure that we're on point. And I want to also thank the people that hold us accountable, that are coming in for public comment, because it is important to know what your community wants to hear. So, thank you all, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Holidays. We got snow in La Mert tonight, we got snow in Koreatown on Saturday, turkeys, bicycles, all the things. Look on the website, thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements, members? So, before we go to adjournments, I just want to make, I guess, an announcement, and thank you, members, for recognizing the first year for our new members and the completion of our work year here for 2023. There has never been a time in this city's history when we've had such a wholesale transfer of the elected officials of the city, never in history. And this has been a remarkable year by any measure. When all of you that were sworn in a year ago started your first meeting, I hate to bring back memories, but you will recall at that meeting, we couldn't speak to each other. We couldn't hear each other, because there was so much noise and disruption and yelling going on in this council chambers. But thanks to, I think, your collective leadership and the camaraderie and the partnership that Councilmember Hernandez described, despite this being not only the newest council in history, but also the most diverse council in the city's history by every measure, including political viewpoints, we've been able to work together and accomplish a lot of remarkable things this year. And I think each of you, and especially our newest members, should be exceptionally proud of the work that you've done coming in at a massively difficult time for this city. And you took the reins of leadership at a time when it was especially difficult to do so. And so, I want to just thank you for that, thank you for working collaboratively together, and thank you for each of your leadership for this council and for your districts. Councilmember Hernandez, you came in and had to take on a challenge around MacArthur Park that was something that the whole city had to take notice of. And you were successful in creating a street medicine team. You inherited this incredible problem of a crisis of overdose, and you took it on head-on. You've broken new ground on a playground and in the park, and you're gradually turning that space around. Councilmember Yaroslavski, as Chair of our Energy and Environment Committee, you've prioritized people over cars. You've been able to advance us forward in our historic drive towards 100% clean energy. You've used underutilized property in your district to house the vulnerable unsheltered, and you're continuing to work in addressing that. And you're setting, you're moving us forward on an environmental agenda that sets the standard for the nation, not just for this city, but for the nation. Councilmember Padilla, as our newest member, you've already taken on, through your chairmanship and through your stewardship of your district, you've already brought your district its first multidisciplinary team, much needed, which will provide mental health and substance use disorder support to people who are experiencing homelessness and who need it. And thanks to your continuing pressure and insistence, we will be returning for council meetings in Van Nuys during the coming years. So, I thank you for your leadership. Councilmember Hutt, as Chair of our Transportation Committee, you have taken on the challenge of mobility in this city. You've made our streets safer for the people of, not only of the 10th District, but the entire city. You've brought new traffic signals to your district around schools. You've improved safety and mobility conditions for motorists, pedestrians, the disabled, everyone who travels not only through the 10th District, but through our entire city. Councilmember Park, you've taken on two chairmanships and have had great success in your district in addressing endemic encampment problems that seemed insurmountable, but you've been able to not only make progress in addressing those encampments, but in housing the people who lived there, and in preserving the precious Bayona Wetlands ecosystem at the same time. And your leadership on our jobs creation efforts and in so many big-ticket items that come through trade travel and tourism, as well as planning for the Olympics, has been a remarkable load to take on in your first year, and you're doing it with great aplomb and with success. And Councilmember Soto Martinez, you got elected, you told me that you ran for this office because of what you felt was done wrong at Echo Park. And now, Echo Park has no fence, it has no encampments, it is a place that's available and accessible to the public. You've made every, you've filled every available shelter bed in your district and are continuing to be a champion for those who are vulnerable and unhoused. And Councilmember McCosker, as Chair of our Personnel Committee, you are continuing to take on what may be the biggest problem that overlies everything else we've talked about, and that is the incredible vacancy rates that this city has taken on. So, you're taking that on not only in your committee, not only as a policy matter, but even in your district by conducting hiring fairs and getting people onboard as part of the city family. And it's that work that's going to allow us to recruit the people necessary, to fix the sidewalks, fix the streets, deliver the basic services that the people of Los Angeles expect us to deliver upon. So, to all of you, please know that in just your first year, and in some cases, less than a first year, you've already made a dramatic impact, and I certainly am looking forward to seeing what you're going to accomplish from here on out. And this body collectively, with your new energy and your new leadership, has done so much in 2023. Under Mr. Blumenthal's leadership, we've managed to enact a budget that respects the limits of our resources while still honoring our values and priorities, and that has included fully funding public safety, while also taking on the very difficult job of creating a new model of public safety that includes creating unarmed response capability and other things. For the first time in the city's history, we enacted the Fair Work Week ordinance so people can plan time with their families. We have some of the strongest tenant protections in the United States of America because of the work that we've done over the last year, while also trying to provide relief and aid to, especially to mom and pop landlords who need it. We were able to make the difficult transition out of COVID-era restrictions on businesses and otherwise. And that continues to be a challenge, to figure out how we can promote our economy while exiting out of those areas. our economy while exiting out of those areas. We ended the age of oil in Los Angeles by once and for all banning the extraction of oil and gas in the city of Los Angeles and phasing, something that they couldn't do in COP28, we did here in Los Angeles by beginning the process of phasing out oil and gas production. We've committed record amounts to building electrification. We enacted comprehensive plastic waste legislation this year. We're adding speed humps around every public school in the, in the city of Los Angeles. Today, we advanced the permanent alfresco dining program. We've locked arms with the mayor and dramatically expedited the production of affordable housing by eliminating some of the barriers that we've suffered with in that area. And of course, we've also, thanks to all of you, for the first time in this city's history, in 100 years of drawing council districts by this council, in November of 2024, there will be on the ballot for the first time, fully independent redistricting, which takes that process out of our hands altogether. And we're not done yet with the ethics reforms that we're working on in strengthening the Ethics Commission, updating the municipal lobbying ordinance, ordinance reforming, land use process, and, yes, I will continue to talk about, and some of us will continue to talk about, the need to reduce the size of our districts and thereby expand the size of this council so that we can be fully representative of all of the people of Los Angeles. So for all of that and more, I am just so grateful to all of you for your extraordinary leadership during extraordinary times. I wish you a very, very restful holiday season, and I'm looking forward to seeing what we're all going to accomplish together in 2024. Thank you all very much. Are there any motions to adjourn? Yes, Councilmember Rodriguez. If we could all please rise for adjourning motions.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I ask that today we adjourn in the memory of Jose De Sosa, who was born on August 16th, 1936, in Panama City, the Republic of Panama, and later migrating to New York City. He enlisted in the U.S. Air Force, serving nearly 10 years. Upon discharge, he began his career working for Pacific Telephone and Telegraph Company, which later merged with AT&amp;T. He worked for 36 years before retiring in 2000. Throughout that time and beyond, Jose was a passionate advocate for diversity and representation, particularly in the community of Pacoima. From 1964 till recently, Jose had been involved in many social justice causes and organizations, including the San Fernando Valley NAACP Freedom Fund Committee. He was elected to serve as president of the San Fernando Valley Branch in 1978, where he served for 16 years alongside his beloved wife Juanita, an executive committee member of the branch. Jose was elected president of the Southern Area Conference of the NAACP and served in that capacity for four years until area conferences were changed to state conferences, and he was then elected president for eight years. During his tour as president of the San Fernando Valley Branch of the NAACP, Jose was instrumental in getting the Los Angeles City Council to pass a 90-day moratorium to discontinue the use of the chokehold by the Los Angeles Police Department, which is still in effect today. Jose and the San Fernando Valley Branch of the NAACP were instrumental in getting the officers involved in Rodney King beating discipline. Major changes were made by all the law enforcement agencies across the country, and Rodney King received the largest settlement. Jose was part of those efforts to discontinue the use of the battering ram by the LAPD as well. He was an officer and board member of the Valley Inter-Community Council for nearly 20 years and an active member of VIX Alicia Barra Dus Duncan Multipurpose Senior Center in Pacoima. He also served on the Board of Directors for the San Fernando Valley Boys and Girls Club, a member of the Board of Directors for the San Fernando Valley Optimist Club, and president of the, and president, served as president of the club for two consecutive four-year terms. He also served on the Board of Directors for the San Fernando Valley Legal Services for over 40 years. Jose lost his beloved wife Juanita De Sosa back in 2020. Together, they raised seven children, building and strengthening the diverse communities of the San Fernando Valley, and his commitment to others working through the lens of inclusion and equity for disenfranchised communities continues to this day. Jose was a transformative leader in the Pacoima community and throughout the entire San Fernando Valley. We sadly lost him on December 11th, 2023, and services remain pending, but we wanted to ensure that we shared our condolences with the family. Jose and Juanita were incredible activists in the community of Pacoima, serving and made an indelible impact throughout the San Fernando Valley and obviously throughout the city of Los Angeles because of their strength and advocacy. I will, we will miss their, their presence. We miss his, we miss Juanita, but we certainly will continue to miss his presence, but know that he has left a lasting legacy that Angelino's benefit to this day. May he rest in peace.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Harris-Dawson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I want to humbly and respectfully request Mrs. Rodriguez's permission to be added to this adjournment. You know, it's particularly moving. People might remember that on Wednesday, I asked that we adjourn in the memory of Edna Williams. Well, Edna and this person both worked for AT&amp;T, and they were a part of a generation of African-Americans that were the first people to be able to get those kinds of jobs. And a lot of them worked together to say, we got these jobs, we can make a good living, we're going to pay it forward, and we're going to be active, and we're going to work together. And so at Mrs. Williams' funeral, we heard about strategizing between those employees, the African-American and Latino employees at AT&amp;T and how they would work together to move causes in the city of Los Angeles. And so, very sad to hear this loss as well, but respect this generation and what they brought to the city.
Thank you. Councilmember Park.
Thank you, Council President. It is with a heavy heart that I am joined this afternoon by my staffer, Dave Kano, and seeking to adjourn on behalf of his father, who passed away tragically on November 8th, Isaiah Kano was a skilled mechanic with natural engineering intuition. As an immigrant of Mexico and an entrepreneur, he poured every bit of that motivation into his business and pride, Kano wrecker service. Not only was this his way to provide for his family, it was his vision and testament to the achievability of the American dream. Isaiah married and had children with the love of his life, Efren Consuelo Aguilar. Even long after her death on December 20th, 1993, his love for her never faded. The two loved God, their children, and each other. They now leave behind many grandchildren, relatives, friends, and cherished ones. Isaiah Kano will be missed, and Dave, please know that your entire CD 11 family loves you and grieve alongside with you. May your father rest in peace.
And Dave, your entire city council family stands with you in this time of loss. Our condolences. Any other motions for adjournment, members? All right. Seeing none, thank you very much, members. Have a great holiday season to all of the members of our staff, to all of our city employees. Thank you very much for your service. Enjoy the holiday, and we look forward to seeing you in 2024. We are adjourned. And this building was completed in 1928. And as we walk around the building, I'm going to point out examples to you of ways in which the architects of the building intended to send the message that Los Angeles was an important part of the national stage and should be seen as being just as significant a city as any East Coast city. So this is the cornerstone of Los Angeles City Hall. This stone was laid by Mayor George Cryer in 1927, and inside of this stone, there is a copy of the city directory of 1927, a list of the city's employees in 1927, and the city's budget for 1927. So...